Good evening. If you could just take a moment to silence your cellphones and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
We have two proclamations this evening. The first is a proclamation called Earth Hour. And Ann Keller might be here, hopefully made it into the chamber.
Okay, I'll read this proclamation and then Anna will tell us a little bit about what Earth Hour is. This tells you a little bit, but there's more to it. So, "Whereas Earth Hour, organized by the World Wildlife Fund, is a global initiative that encourages individuals, businesses, and governments around the world to turn off all nonessential lighting for one hour on Saturday, March 24th, 2018, between 8:30 and 9:30 p.m. And whereas the goal of Earth Hour is to demonstrate that individual action is needed to address the urgency of climate change and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And whereas humankind is currently facing tremendous global challenges affecting every community, including large-scale migration, extreme inequality and poverty, degradation of ecosystems, mass extinction of species, and global climate change. And whereas all people of this earth, no matter their race, gender, income, sexual orientation, or national origin, have a right to a healthy environment. And whereas the city of Asheville is committed to reducing its greenhouse gas emissions by 80 percent below fiscal year 2008 levels. And whereas the city of Asheville recognizes that climate change is the biggest environmental threat facing our planet. And whereas the city of Asheville will join thousands of cities in over 152 countries across the world in celebrating the World Wildlife Fund's Earth Hour. Now therefore, I, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of Asheville, have the distinct honor of proclaiming March 24th, 2018, between the 8:30 to 9:30 p.m., as Earth Hour throughout Asheville, and encourage all citizens, businesses, and institutions to participate in Earth Hour to demonstrate environmental awareness and the effects of climate change." And this is Anna Priest.
Hi there. I'm a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee on Energy and Environment for the City of Asheville. And behalf of that group, SACE is our acronym, we appreciate the city for taking this step to save electricity and uphold its mission to reduce its carbon footprint. SACE, in partnership with the city, continues to explore opportunities to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and work on climate resiliency, not only for the betterment of the environment, but also for social impacts and economic benefits as well. These interests are all part of making Asheville a more sustainable and resilient place to live. Thank you.
And just to reiterate, that is March 24th, 8:30 to 9:30. You can participate in your house, just turn off all nonessential lighting, and you'll be participating with millions and millions and millions of people all across the world who are doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Keith Young is going to present the National Service Recognition Day. And I think we've got Ann Whistler?
Whistle-hunt.
Whistle-hunt, okay. Sorry, there's smudge here.
I'm going to be reading this for Recognition Day for National Service. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation's counties are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country through direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages nonfederal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with county officials and mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities. And is joining with National League of Cities, National Association of Counties, Cities of Service, and mayors and county officials across the country for the Mayor and County Recognition Day for National Service on April the 3rd, 2018. Now therefore, I, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim April the 3rd, 2018 as National Service Recognition Day in the City of Asheville.
Thank you, Councilman Young, Mayor Manheimer, and the rest of City Council. SeniorCorps and AmeriCorps are sponsored through the Corporation for National and Community Service. You are served in Buncombe County by over 140 foster grandparent and senior companion volunteers who are helping mentor children in the school system with special needs, as well as our senior companions are helping older adults live independently in their own homes without having to go into costly facilities, therefore saving a lot of money for our community, as well as being a solution to one of our area's crises. We also have dozens of AmeriCorps members who are serving with a large number of nonprofits who are serving a lot of needs with children, as well as older adults. And we recognize the great service that they're providing to Buncombe County, and we appreciate the recognition you've provided to us today. Thank you very much.
Next, we will consider the consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments regarding the consent agenda, anything that needs to be considered separately? Do I have a motion?
Some.
All right, we have a motion, a second to adopt the consent agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak on a motion to adopt the consent agenda? All right, if not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have, we actually have two presentations and reports tonight. The first is going to be the Asheville Museum of Science presentation. And the second is going to be the Racial Justice Coalition. And do I have representatives of the Racial Justice Coalition here? Jerry Leonard and James Lee, just in case you're in the overflow room, folks, you'll be up next, so go ahead and make your way up here. But first, we'll hear the presentation regarding the Asheville Museum of Science. Again, folks with the Racial Justice Coalition that are handling the presentation, please make your way to the chamber.
So, I'm passing around just some Cliff Notes of a version of my presentation, if you want to follow along with that as well. But thank you all so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. My name is Anna Priest, and most of you all know me, but may not know much more about me, other than the fact that I'm the Executive Director of the Asheville Museum of Science. I'm a Asheville native, half Cuban, half Tennessean, and I was born at Mission Hospitals, which I can currently see from my bedroom window across the Livingston Street Valley. I studied environmental science at UNC Chapel Hill and studied city planning in the Netherlands, as well as traveled the world, and eventually found myself back in my hometown doing stream and wetland restoration as a professional wetland scientist. In 2015, I was offered my dream job of running a science museum. I love showing off Western North Carolina's beautiful natural resources to visitors and locals through our amazing exhibits and hands-on programs. You can explore the beautiful Hall of Minerals, the Southern Appalachian Forest, you can dig for dinosaur fossils that were really found here in North Carolina, and explore outer space and NOAA weather data stored just down the road in the federal building through our interactive panorama exhibit. Amos makes science accessible to everyone, and we show children that they too can explore, design, and invent things using the most important tool that we are all gifted with: our creative minds. Many of you have been to Amos, and if you have not, I strongly encourage you to come see for yourself one of the only venues in downtown Asheville for local families and visitors to enjoy. After packing up its home for the past 24 years in packed place as the Colburn Earth Science Museum, Amos had a rush opening in November of 2016, and we are still in the process of raising funds and building exhibits to fill out our new 8,000-square-foot space. Later this month, we will see a new art installation, which will highlight invasive species and the impacts on our earth. In this summer, we will install the highly anticipated French Broad River water table. In our first year of being open, Amos served over 40,000 visitors in 2017, and nearly half of those visitors are locals from Buncombe County, and 15,000 of which came from the city of Asheville. As you can see, the lion's share of the Asheville visitors come from the central 28801 zip code, with the rest coming from the west, south, north, and east in descending order. This data was collected by our new visitor tracking system, which allows us to accurately know who we are serving. And it's pretty apparent that Amos is just as much a resource for the residents of Asheville as it is for its tourists. But we don't just serve the residents of Asheville by having them come visit the museum, but through mission-focused educational programs. Did you know that North Carolina is ranked 36th in the nation for science proficiency? And for every unemployed person, there are two available STEM jobs, but not everyone has the necessary skills to fulfill those positions. Amos is here to help get kids on the STEM pipeline early on for a better chance at a successful career path. Our field trip offerings include geology, forces in motion, computer science, astronomy, weather, and matter and energy. All of these classes hit North Carolina science standards, which help teachers that may not always have the equipment or resources. There's only so much a teacher can do with a textbook and a shoestring budget. Out of the 2,200 elementary school students in the city of Asheville, Amos served over half of those students in 2017. And starting the spring semester, we have expanded our curriculum to include middle school offerings as well. These numbers may seem impressive in our first year of our new location, but we have been building this reputation for over 25 years. But we recognize that Amos is not an island, and we know that we cannot be successful alone. And that's why we hold community partnerships in the highest regard. And one way we utilize community partnerships is through informal program offerings. These programs include our Homeschool Mondays, Night at the Museums, where parents can drop their kids off, a podcast called Seven Minute Science, which usually runs more like 22 Minutes Science, but who's counting? Saturday Science Programs, and our adult seminar series called Science Pub. All of these programs and more allow us to tap into our community for guest speakers from other organizations, as well as numerous science and tech industries surrounding our region. But most importantly, it allows Amos to expand beyond our four walls and get into the communities where we are needed most. Amos has been enabled to partner with Asheville City Preschools and Head Start Programs by bringing our preschool Little Explorers Club into the community to serve over 600 students with a partnership through Buncombe County. And you may remember a little celestial event that occurred this past summer. Amos hosted a solar eclipse festival right out here in the park for over 4,000 attendees with the help of community partners, including Asheville City Schools, Buncombe County Schools, and UNC Asheville. Additionally, some of you will remember how hard it was to get a pair of legit eclipse sunglasses, but we were bound and determined to set aside 4,000 glasses to give to other charities and organizations listed here that serve underprivileged kids and families in our community to make sure that they had a safe experience for a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Amos has been providing free programming for the past three years to the Asheville Middle Schools In-Real-Life Program. Every Friday, students get a chance to come to our STEM lab in the museum for design and engineering projects, including coding, LEGO robotics, 3D printers, and good old-fashioned cardboard building challenges. This year, we also started serving at homework diners and Claxton Elementary for their after-school programs as well. And we are now targeting all of these students from these programs and offering them full scholarships to Amos Summer Camps, held on the campus of UNC Asheville for 2nd through 7th graders, and at the museum for kindergarten and 1st graders. This scholarship is made possible by the Duke Energy Foundation. Last summer, we were a host site for the KALA program, where high school junior Zaya Brown got to shadow multiple employees from Amos, learning about science education by helping out with our summer camps and nonprofit administration. Although Zaya was pretty determined to go into a health-related profession, she was excited to learn about all the different science career opportunities that we highlighted throughout our summer camp experiences. Historically, some of our most important partnerships have come from municipal support from both the city and the county. For 24 years, the Colburn resided rent-free on city-owned land in packed place. Buncombe County supported the packed-place partners through generous allocations each year. And during our capital campaign and move out of packed place, both the county and the city supported our efforts. The county allocated $125,000 for capital improvements, and the city distributed $30,000 to Amos for moving expenses. During our fast search for a new location so the art museum could get started on their construction, we decided on the Wells Fargo Building, which has opportunities for future expansions. We always knew we wanted to remain a safe and family-friendly venue in the heart of downtown Asheville, but this comes with a cost, as we are now paying downtown Asheville rent for the first time in 24 years. According to data from the Association of Science and Technology Centers, the average museum receives nearly 25 percent of their budget from municipal support. And Amos currently receives about 3 percent from municipal support. And this includes state funding that was significantly decreased from $50,000 to $18,000 this past year. The next four sites highlight four different science museums across the state that also rely on municipal support. The Museum of Life and Science in Durham receives 10% to 25% of their operating budget from municipal support, and their 30,000-square-foot building is paid through the county's capital improvement plan. The Marbles Kids Museum in Raleigh receives 10% of operating support from their municipality. And additionally, the building is owned by the county, and the organization pays $1 in rent each year. The Catawba Science Center in Hickory has a 50,000-square-foot building, paid for and maintained by the City of Hickory, and receives between 10% to 25% of operational support. And lastly, the Jim and Laffordary Museum in Hendersonville pays $1 per year in rent, and their admission is free and also subsidized by Henderson County. The Asheville Museum of Science would love to continue a partnership with the city of Asheville to support our mission to provide science education and literacy through an interactive and hands-on learning environment for the betterment of the community, so that we can help close the achievement gap, promote the STEM pipeline and workforce development, and enhance the quality of life for all the citizens of Asheville. Now, if you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer some.
I don't have a question, just a comment. Also, yeah, so two comments, actually. So, your presentation has perhaps unfortunately landed on a night when there's a lot of other focuses in another place. So, I hope we've all had a chance to look at this and hear this. It seems to me this is an important piece of Asheville, and that, certainly the way that the funding is structured now is not in line with many other leading museums in the state. So, I hope that we can, in some way, either in this budget cycle or a future budget cycle, consider how and whether to address that concern. So, thank you very much.
Well, and you might have that opportunity at HCD to talk about outside agents of funding.
Yeah, I think, just to clarify you all, Amos has not come in for strategic partnership funding this year, is that right?
That's correct. So, we were directed by some city staff and some council members that we didn't quite fit the mold for the city's strategic partnership fund. We actually tried to go to one of the informational sessions this past winter, but it was canceled due to weather. But instead of trying to force the application process, we preferred to submit a request with the city council and staff to be added to the budget in a different way, instead of forcing something that doesn't quite fit who we are.
Yeah, yeah. It's a little, it's a little out of that particular box, so.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, let me just give a little, do a little housekeeping here in terms of the process for the rest of the evening. Hopefully, folks downstairs on one can hear me, because I know we've got overflow capacity. We have, our regular agenda is actually pretty short, but obviously, the public comment will take up the bulk of the evening. The Racial Justice Coalition reached out to me Friday, I believe it was, James, and mentioned that they have put together some comments that they wanted to present to council. And so, we're going to take an opportunity to do that now under presentations. Presentations are allotted 10 minutes, and they have two speakers. And then, also, I asked Carmen, thank you Carmen for running upstairs, because you just let us know today, I believe, or yesterday, that you're going to be speaking on behalf of the NAACP. So, again, we'll hear from the two groups. We'll jump back on our regular agenda and finish these public hearings. They should be pretty quick. They're street closures, so they're pretty quick. And then, we'll go back into public comment, and I'm going to take folks in order that they signed up. Some people indicated already that they wanted to cede their time to someone, so when we get to those, we'll kind of have to sort of figure that out. I am going to try to let people know who's on deck, so that if you're downstairs in overflow, you can start to make your way upstairs when you know you're coming up pretty soon. Tonight is an opportunity for council to listen. We do not have anything on our agenda to take any action tonight. We want to hear from the community. We are going to have a work session in one week, Tuesday, in one week. Part of that work session was already planned and devoted to budget. Maggie's looking at me like, what are you announcing? And, but the other part of the work session is going to be specifically devoted to the topic that most of you are here to talk with us about tonight, because council needs to hear from you and then have an opportunity to come up with the action that we want to take as a body. And a work session is an opportunity for us to do that. We'll figure out those logistics and let you know. Normally, our work sessions are downstairs on the first floor. That's obviously a pretty small room for this, so we'll try to figure out if we need to find a larger venue. Our city clerk, I'm just giving her work and work. So, with that, James, if you're going to be first, you tell me how you want to do it. We're going to hear from the Racial Justice Coalition, and thank you for taking the time to come speak to us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. We want to thank you for providing the Racial Justice Coalition the opportunity to present some considerations during the agenda. Again, my name is James Lee. I'm the previous co-chair of the Racial Justice Coalition. The Racial Justice Coalition appreciates the thoughtfulness of the city council by asking us to speak during the presentation portion of today's agenda. However, we also want to raise and acknowledge the other individuals, grassroots groups, and other organizations that will be speaking later.
This is a live mic?
Yeah, but if you could use the other one.
Sure. All right. My name's Gary Leonard. I'm the Racial Justice and Outreach Specialist at YWC Asheville. I'm also the co-chair of Building Bridges of Asheville, and I am the current co-chair of the Racial Justice Coalition. The Racial Justice Coalition includes representatives from organizations in Asheville and Buncombe County dedicated to racial justice. The RJC comes together in commitment to racial equity and to advocate for the rights of people of color. The RJC consists of those who can be named: ACLU of Western North Carolina, Asheville-Buncombe Branch of the NAACP, ABIPPA, Asheville-Buncombe Institute for Parity Achievement, Asheville City Schools Foundation, Carolina Jews for Justice, Children First Communities in Schools, Christians for United Community, Democracy North Carolina, Elders Fierce for Justice, Mountain Peoples Assembly, Residents Council, and YWC of Asheville.
So, the RJC's vision is to mobilize and engage and energize existing organizations during racial justice work, becoming a national model for best practices and improved police community relations in Asheville and Buncombe County. This group came together in December of 2014, after the tragic events in Ferguson, Missouri, that prompted a group of organizations to seek allied partners committed to racial justice. The thought was that coming together as a coalition of organizations could have more unified voices in responding to these tragedies, and more importantly, preventing such tragedies here in Asheville and Buncombe County. Unfortunately, we continue to see issues of racial profiling and systematic racism showing up in our policing here in Asheville.
After Jerry Jai Williams was shot in July of 2016, tensions within the Asheville community, specifically the black community, has never been healed nor reconciled. Then in September of 2016, Officer Ozer was caught on video slamming a 16-year-old black girl to the ground. Then in February of 2017, the same officer was captured on video threatening to take a group of black teenagers to jail while holding an AR-15. It later emerged he had a BB gun. Now with the sickening and disheartening incident of an APD officer harassing, beating, and tasing Johnny Rush, it is reminiscent of thousands that have taken place across the country and also right here in Asheville against black and brown lives. And in this case, for jaywalking. The incident depicts racist application of excessive and unnecessary force. It is contrary to the Asheville Police Department's recent adopted revised policy on excessive force and de-escalation training that the RJC has worked on with APD that included other community members. The incident clearly proves that written policies and trainings are not enough. There is a need for strong measures of accountability to ensure that actions coincide with policy and training.
So, here are the following recommendations we hope to make to city council. The first one, before we can talk solutions, policies, training, we hope that you can provide Mr. Johnny Rush with trauma-informed care for this incident. If we want to see systematic change, then we need to see action behind that change. Mr. Rush should not incur this responsibility on his own. He did not create this situation, and therefore should not be required to recover from that on his own. If Mr. Rush risks to be left alone, the city of Asheville should do everything that it can to accommodate his need and to treat him as you would your son, daughter, or family member to be treated.
We also want to take this moment and lift up the efforts of Dee Williams and the NAACP Criminal Justice Committee and their work with Ian Mance with the Southern Coalition for Social Justice. We want to revisit and recommend the policy revisions around written consent for searches and deprioritizing regulatory stops. These efforts, at the time they were presented, seemed unnecessary, however, if they would have been in place, could this situation have been avoided? What we're seeing in Fayetteville, North Carolina, is currently utilizing written consent for searches, and it could be helpful for our city staff to work with those organizations that initially recommended these policy changes to explore the validity of implementing them here in Asheville.
Number three, we would want to lift up the efforts of Nicole Townsend, Carmen Ramos Kennedy, and other grassroots efforts to not only here in Asheville, but in the state by encouraging support from the city council for House Bill 165. That went to the assembly in 2017 in reference to establishing citizen review boards that have decided, that has decision-making power. We've seen that this bill has been pushed by Charlotte, Durham, and Greensboro, and in the need of support from a coalition of cities in North Carolina in order to gain momentum. We recommend passing a resolution for the city of Asheville to call upon our elected officials on state level to introduce this bill.
We also recommend an improved complaint process. There needs to be an increased accessibility for informing citizens of how and when they can access the complaint process. Perception is reality, and the current perception is that law enforcement cannot be trusted for our community, and specifically for communities of color, to be able to voice their concerns and issues in a manner that will be heard. We expect this level of transparency, not only on the APD website, but also in newspapers and billboards even.
During the Racial Justice Coalition meeting with Chief Hooper last Monday, the implementation of unbiased policing hotline was discussed. Furthermore, the city of Asheville set up a hotline for people to share their feelings prior to the Wednesday's Citizen Police Advisory Committee meeting. We recommend instituting an unbiased policing hotline and respond to all complaints within 48 hours. We would like to see 100 percent documentation of calls and complaints and report to the Human Resource Commission about actions taken. This hotline could be broadcasted not only on the city's website, but also on the billboards, newspapers, and other areas that Gary mentioned moments ago.
We also recommend investigating every excessive use of force matter as a criminal case first, and as an administrative case only secondarily after the criminal investigation is complete. If necessary, you can pull in multiple investigators, conduct two separate If necessary, you can pull in multiple investigators, conduct two separate cases for any and all use of force matters, one administrative and another as criminal case. It is our understanding that Chief Hooper, in meeting with the organization Faith for Justice, has already implemented this measure.
We recommend complete and transparency around accountability for all the officers that were present during that incident. We've seen steps being taken from District Attorney Todd Williams to drop 27 cases associated with Officer Hickman. However, he was, he was not only the, he was not the only officer at fault in this incident. The city recently released details and information into the use of force incident involving Officer Hickman. We recommend the same level of transparency in handling Sergeant Tops' internal punishment, as well as other officers on the scene. It's important to the community that this message is sent to all officers is, is a clear one, so that this matter does not negatively impact the community's perception of the police department, and the way that the city responds to misconduct by its employees.
We also recommend a level of intentionality from the city of Asheville Police Department to include people of color in the police training, so they can share their stories with new officers and experienced officers. While you cannot train your way to equity, we would like to see additional training for those officers specifically involved in this incident, around implicit bias, de-escalation, and other equity efforts. This provides the ability for those most impacted by law enforcement to share their experience with those that will be there to enforce a law. Without hearing the experience of those impacted folk, it is a checkbox, I'm sorry, the training is just that, it's a training. It's a checkbox that kind of experience rather than a deep meaningful change that we want in our community policing model. There's a need to humanize each other, and typically, as we've seen in the case with Mr. Rush, people of color are dehumanized and devalued by officers.
We recommend that all police officers out of uniform, that they be out of uniform, involved in our community engagement, look at ways to rebuild community trust. There's a number of organizations and grassroots groups that will be willing to facilitate sincere and authentic interaction with law enforcement and community members. However, the officers must be sincere and authentic in their motives.
The RJC recommends researching and implementing ways that the Civil Service Board can be equitable. For example, city council appoints two positions of the Civil Service Board. What if one of those positions is required to be a person of color or a resident of the public housing community? This would ensure that there is more representation of people of color and those who are most impacted by law enforcement. Had Officer Hickman not resigned, there was the potential for him to go to the Civil Service Board and be reinstated if Chief Hooper would have terminated his employment. In the past, the Civil Service Board has not upheld the values of the community or the police department.
The RJC further recommends that we look at city staff on how this was handled. The report came to the Assistant City Manager, and according to the information that has been released, was supposed to go to the City Manager, however, never made its way up the chain of command. We think that this matter needs to be prioritized by the City Manager and the Assistant City Managers. There is a need for review on how transparent our city staff are, both to council and to the community. These recommendations are not affixed, it's not affixed to the recommendations, but it is a start of dialogue with our community. Every organization, every grassroots leader, every coalition, to begin to rebuild trust within our government and our police department. We want to see the structures that have been put in place removed, we want to eliminate the barriers that have divided our community to be torn down, and we want the systems that have been created to keep those in power in power. Racial profiling, systematic racism, and other forms of discrimination to end. We want a better community for all of our citizens in Asheville.
And to close, the Racial Justice Coalition is organizing a candidate forum for the sheriff's race, because we believe that this is not an issue that is specific to the city of Asheville, that we also need to look at our county as well.
Thank you. And just before you guys get started, RJC, thank you very much, and you all gave us this in writing, so that's very helpful, thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Carmen Ramos Kennedy, and this is my wonderful young friend, community organizer, Nicole Townsend. I invited Nicole to speak with me today. Nicole is a part of Southerners on New Ground. I wanted her to address the city council along with me, because I want everyone, all of us assembled here, to see what activism looks like across the board. I'm the president of the Asheville-Buncombe Branch of NAACP. She's with Southerners on New Ground. We both have our lanes, and our lanes constantly intersect, and at that intersection is truth, justice, and equity. Please remember, there is more than one way to advocate and work for positive change. Is the beating of Johnny Rush for jaywalking a reflection of APD's value and regard for black, brown, poor, and homeless people in our community? I know many of you will say no, but what history shows us is overwhelmingly clear. That late-night assault upon a black man bothering no one is just one more act in a continuum of entrenched, an entrenched way of thinking and acting among those that police us. It must stop. There must be accountability. These kinds of violent acts at the hands of police are both human rights violations and civil rights violations. Cannot a human being have a right to walk down the street without concern they'll be harassed and then attacked by police? When there is no system in place for accountability, and there, there is no safety, and if there is no safety, there is grave concern among the people. And the people in this town are gravely concerned for their, the presence of police. The continued use of excessive force with no accountability will not be tolerated in our communities. Every single use of excessive force must start with a criminal investigation. Police are not above the law. We must establish an independent citizen review board with teeth. In that effort, the NAACP would ask you to look to HB 165, a statewide effort to get Raleigh to vote on and approve citizen review boards for every municipality in the state. We are looking for a champion. Will Asheville be our champion? People must get organized and educate themselves on the issues. We must learn how our government works and make it work for us. Voting is an essential part of making government work. Look to folks like Siobhan DeHarper, working with Piska Legal, the Women, the League of Women Voters, and Children First in School, to educate the community about the roles and decision-making process of local government, and to make our voices heard. To the Asheville Police Department, we all know that Officer Hickman does not represent the force in its entirety, but when you stand around and let acts like what happened to Mr. Rush occur, it makes a statement, and it's far from good. I offer that police look to their fellow officers like Quentin Miller and Evan Coward as role models that do a great job with the community. They both give and receive respect. Remember, respect. Treat people with it, and you'll get it back. One last thing, Chief Hooper has heard recommendations from the Racial Justice Coalition, faith leaders, myself, and many others. She has owned mistakes in the Rush case, and has made promises to institute many of the recommendations you heard today. We have a lot of work to do to build trust for so many in this community, and I mean many. I, I think the chief is ready and able to continue doing this important work. Let's get it done. Nicole?
Good afternoon, full transparency, I'm not fully prepared to speak, as many of you are, I'm exhausted. Gwen, so many times I have heard you say things like, well, the city can't do this, but what I'm asking is for y'all to fight for us on a state level. I know that there are things that y'all can't do, based on legislation set out by the state, but I'm asking for y'all to go to bat for us and fight for us on a state level, and I'm also letting you know that we have allies in Charlotte, and Greensboro, and Raleigh-Durham, that will sit down at the table with us, so we can come together and fight this on a state level. People are watching y'all. People are watching y'all, and now is the time. And we know that this incident is not new, but the cameras are. We know that this country has a history of criminalizing black and brown folks, queer and trans folks for just existing, and we're watching y'all. Is Asheville going to finally step up and be a model for the South? Or is Asheville going to continue to hang rainbow flags and pretend like everyone here is treated equally? We're watching you.
Okay, as promised, thank you very much, both groups, for speaking with us during the presentations. We are going to take a, go back to the agenda and do the road closures, and then we'll come back to, and boards and commissions, I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you, Mayor Manheimer, Vice Mayor Whistler, members of council. Tonight, I actually have three closures to bring in front of you, and I'm sorry, if it's your pleasure, I will do them one at a time, so they can be each looked at.
And let me interrupt you for just a second, we do have one person who actually wanted to speak on the road closures, and she's stuck on the first floor, so Karen Smelter, please make your way to the council chamber, so you can speak on road closures, please proceed.
And which one was that?
Peachtree.
Oh, okay, so that is, you want me to hold that one off?
Yeah, why don't you go Beebs?
I can hold off.
Okay.
We can go to 85 Dever Street. And this map isn't very big, but I'll explain it. The attached map is an unnamed alley right-of-way that has been petitioned by Mr. Joseph Ruiz. He is the property owner of 85 and 87 Dever Street, which are two of the adjoining parcels. The proposal of this closing of the unnamed alley was presented to all city departments with no objections. It was also presented to local utilities with no objections. The alley is currently a dead end with only three adjoining property owners. The adjoining property owners have been contacted, and at this point, all concerns appear to have been addressed. Staff is supportive of this closure, and would request that the council support this request, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
The only question I have is, is it a paper alley? It's hard to tell here if it's actually open or not.
It is a paper alley.
Okay, so it doesn't even, it doesn't exist on the ground, but it does on paper somewhere?
Exactly, yes.
Does anyone else have a question? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on item B, a resolution to permanently close an unopened right-of-way located near 85 Dever Street. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing, do I have a motion?
Motion.
To approve.
Motion to approve the closure of 85 Dever Street. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, but we don't have a city clerk? Somebody is paying attention to the motion and the second? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's do the last one, and then we'll circle back to the top.
Okay, the, the last one is also on Dever Street, coincidentally.
Maggie, we just did the second one first. Gwen made the motion, and.
I think BJ made it.
BJ's second of it.
The second one, like I said, is also on Dever Street, is just south of Howard, where Howard intersects with Haywood Street. This one also is a paper right-of-way that is currently unopened. Four adjoining property owners, three of which are Barwick and Associates, one of which is Big Jake Enterprises. This one as well was presented to all city staffs, staff with no objections, presented to local utilities with no objections. All adjoining property owners obviously have been contacted and no objections, they, they were all the petitioners for this one. Likewise, city staff is supportive of this request also, and I would be happy to answer any questions on this one.
Any questions? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak on item C, a resolution to permanently close an unopened right-of-way located at the end of Dever Street, south of Howard Street? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, do I have a motion?
Motion to permanently close an unopened right-of-way located at the end of Dever Street, south of Howard Street.
Second, somebody?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and last but not least.
And lastly, this one is actual, an actual open street that we are presenting for closure. This is a portion of Peachtree Street in the South Asheville area, that is immediately adjacent to Jake Rusher Park. The actual, this was brought on, petitioned initially by Parks and Rec, moved through the appropriate channels with that. The city of Asheville is the adjoining property owners with the park on one side, and the parcels on the other side of Peachtree Street. This particular closure would be closing a portion of Peachtree Street, which is currently a through road. The closure would allow the improvements and expansion of Jake Rusher Park as set forth in the general obligation bonds. This would allow for additional parking and improvements to the park. All adjoining property owners that have raised questions have been contacted. Technically, the city is the immediate adjoining property owners. I know one property owner just south of the closure has contacted myself and Pete Wall. Those, those questions have been contacted, to the best of my knowledge. Like the others, staff is supportive of, supportive of this closure. We do not see that it will, it will not prevent ingress or egress by anyone, and that it, we do not see that it would be a negative impact, and we request council to support this closure also.
Assuming we approve it tonight, when would, when would the closure actually take place?
The closure would actually happen, well, the filing would be recorded tomorrow, and then hard closure would happen shortly thereafter.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, did have one person who signed up to speak on this item, and that is Karen So I'm opening the public hearing, so anyone can speak on this, but Karen, you signed up, so.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I'm a little nervous, because this is not something I usually do, but I'm a resident of Peachtree Street, 180 Peachtree Street, and if you can see on the map where it's going to be closed, Cedar runs with Sycamore, and I have a house, I can see Pete the Park from my house. I'm the last house on Peachtree Street, which includes six houses. I purchased my home in 2005, and in 2006, I noticed, before we had development in the South, that so much traffic was cutting through Cedar to get from 25A to Hendersonville Road. And I worked with Police Officer Evan Coward, and I do have old emails, I'm going back, and I'm going to read like a paragraph from what Evan related to Marsha Strickford, who was, she's retired now, who was the neighbor volunteer coordinator. And this is from Evan to Marsha, and he said, could you please send, set this up for me? I just spoke with Karen Smelter of 180 Peachtree Street, and my phone number, about the speeding traffic using Cedar Lane from Sweden Creek through Linden Street to Hendersonville as a cut-through. She has been trying to address this issue since 2006. I've been waiting to get here for a while. I don't have anything prepared, and she is afraid, especially now with the many children in the neighborhood, that kids are at a great risk while playing in their front yards. Cedar Lane is narrow, and it's difficult to see around the curves between Sweden Creek and Peachtree Road. She begged for speed bumps. I told her that those were very expensive, but they, that they would set up the request anyhow. I was wondering whether the city, city would be willing to, at least to perform a speed study and post-speed limit, slow children playing, and other signs along the stretch and traffic calming is going to be an opinion. I've been dealing with speeding issues along the stretch of Cedar Lane from Sweden Creek to Linden Street since 2009. I hope there is some way we could help their cause. FYI, Karen told me that she plans to collect letters asking to help address, to sit. FYI, Karen told me that she plans to collect letters asking to help address to City Council and the city manager. Let me know if I can help. I have quite a few letters I want to present. This is from actually 2011, when we finally...there was no speed limit. We finally got it down to 25 miles an hour. I don't believe there's any slow children playing, and if I could point on that map somehow...
So your time...your time has run out, but if you have materials you want us to look at, you can give them to Maggie, but could you just tell us, are you for or against this?
Oh, I'm for closing it, and I'm for...yeah. I'm for making other safety issues when you're developing a park of that size in a little neighborhood with small streets.
Thank you.
Speed bumps, yeah. So I'm gonna do...bring these letters and present them to you from 2011. We've been working on it.
Thank you.
Do you wanna...
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. If you...if your neighbors are interested in implementing traffic calming, like speed bumps and that kind of thing, the city has a process for that. I would suggest you reach out to Ken Putnam, who is the chair...who's the head of the Transportation Department, and he'll...I mean, those kind of neighborhood input is what they pull together, but we have a process in place, so maybe...
I emailed Jeff Moore just recently and sent him pictures of how small...
Jeff, Jeff will be fine.
How small those streets are, and I just sent him a picture that I walk...that we're gonna put 75 park space spaces in there and probably bring in hundreds of children. We need to protect the children and the residents of that area, and closing up Peachtree Street is great, but still, the traffic cutting through and everything has to be addressed too, because there's so many people that walk there now, and there are children right around that. Come visit me and help me walk my dogs. I'm just afraid for the children and the residents.
Ma'am, I'll just say this. I don't think Jeff Moore's gonna be at the city anymore, so you may as well send that email to Ken Putnam.
Ken Putnam, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and if you have any problems, just let me know.
Yeah, and those are from...I did the calming, street calming, and these letters are for street calming from 2011.
Thank you.
Ken Putnam now.
Okay. Do...oh, we need a motion?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I move to permanently close an unopened right-of-way located at the...oh, I'm sorry. To permanently close a portion of Peachtree Street at Jake...around Jake Rusher Park. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Another...the last item on the agenda is the boards and commissions. I'm gonna turn it over to Vice Mayor.
Okay, so the Boards and Commissions Committee met today. We had some really great discussion with a lot of community members around all these processes, and looking forward to...to the...we looked at the Human Relations Committee, the draft...a new draft ordinance, and got a lot of great input from the community. And one thing we really talked about is, we need the community to continue to volunteer to be part of these boards and commissions. Certainly, since I've been on council, we have had a much greater number of people applying for these boards and commissions, and the quality of the people that are applying has been great. That being said, when we have more applicants, we can only pick a certain number. So I'm gonna make some recommendations from the Boards and Commission...Boards and Commissions Committee, understanding that we really appreciate all the applications, and encourage you to stay involved and continue to apply, even if you didn't get selected this go-around. So for the Audit Committee, this is gonna be a new committee being formed, and we set the criteria up so that there would be two active CPAs, and then other...the other two members would...they could be active CPAs, but just knowledgeable around financial issues and financial statements and those kind of things. So what the Boards and Commissions Committee suggested is to appoint Amy Kemp and Scott Farkas, who are both active CPAs, and to interview Hama...Hamancho Carvier, Scott Powell, and Gail Miller. That's a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. And for the Boards of...Board of Adjustments, we have three slots open for alternates. We suggest that we appoint Warren Williams and Sarah Katzmark and advertise for the remaining opening. That's a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. For the Housing Initiative...Homeless, I'm sorry, Homeless Initiative Advisory Council, we plan to...we would suggest that we would re-advertise for the opening for that, focusing on the potential of finding some candidates who are currently or very recently experiencing homelessness, so to give an opportunity to...for the community to get some appointments along that range. Is that okay with everybody? We don't need that. Okay. And multimodal transportation, the Multimodal Transportation Committee...Commission has not had a chance to look at the candidates, and they have asked that we postpone the appointment of that until next month. For the Noise Ordinance Appeals Board, the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends that we appoint Wayne Wheeler. That's a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. For the Recreation Board, the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends the appointment of Justin Thompson. That's a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And for the Riverfront Redevelopment Group, we have one opening there, and the Boards and Commissions Committee suggests that we interview Tim Schaller, Viola Spells, and I'm guessing the pronunciation of this last name, Shelley Schenker, interview for that one open position. That's a motion?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're now concluded with the regular printed agenda, and we're gonna go into the public comment period. So for those of you that have not had an opportunity yet to speak to City Council, well, let me just explain the process, and it...so hopefully, it's not too scary. I'm remembering the first time I did it, 22 years ago, and it was scary. You have three minutes to speak. There are lights on the lectern that tell you, green means go, orange means you're getting close to the end, and red with a beep means stop. I have a lot of people signed up to speak tonight, so please be respectful of the stop and stop speaking. If you have written materials and you couldn't get through everything, you can hand them to Maggie, and she will pass them around to us, and we can read the rest of what you If you want to speak on behalf of a group, that is fine. You have to have three people who will cede their time to you, meaning they will not speak, but they will give their time to you, and then you can have up to 10 minutes to speak. I'm trying to remember if I...so one of our super annoying rules is that there's no clapping in the chamber, but you'll notice we already did some clapping. So I think we're gonna give this a try, where you can show us your support for the speaker. But if it gets to be too much, just we may have to go back to enforcing that rule, just simply so we can give everyone a chance to speak. And I'm especially thinking about people who've never done this before and may be trying to deal with being nervous about it and trying to get through it. So let's just all try to remember to be respectful of one another and get through this part. So I'm gonna call people out if you're...I'm gonna try to give a few names. So also, the part about not yelling out from the crowd, obviously, from the floor. You can tell us your feelings about it when it's your chance to speak.
Esther, can we...could we ask people, instead of applauding, which also takes a little more time, just to do the fingers, do some...I mean, I know people want to indicate support somehow.
I feel like that's like passe now, though, but whatever. If you're into it, do it. Okay, so I'm gonna...I'm gonna call out the first three speakers or so, so everybody can make their way up here. I know Keith asked if he could say something before we start this, and obviously, if anybody else on council wants to do that now, that's fine. Also, if you want to do that at the end, that's fine. I do have probably about an hour and 45 minutes worth of speakers signed up to speak, if we didn't even take any time between speakers to get the next person up here. So just kind of everyone settle and get a granola bar or something. Oh, wait, let me...I'll call the names, and then you go. So Daniel Gilbert, Les...Daniel Gilbert wanted to talk about coal ash, so, okay. Leslie Boyd, everybody else wanted to talk about not coal ash. And Elizabeth Huesman, I hope I'm saying that right. So Keith, go ahead, and then we'll start into the speakers. You'll just wait just one moment. I just was letting you know you're on deck.
Just gonna jump right in. This is a...we know what you're here for. I know what you're here for. And, you know, this is the first, besides our special meeting that we held, was it last Monday, this is the first time that council has actually had an official meeting since the Mr. Rush incident. And we had a community meeting last Wednesday, and emotions ran high, as they should. Where do I start? Yes, I'm your council member. I'm one of your council members. I put on a suit and a tie every day, but what I don't take off is my blackness. That doesn't come off, regardless of the suit and tie. Before I got here, I didn't know half of these folks up here. We weren't friends. We didn't hang out like that. After I leave, I doubt I'll probably keep up with the other half. No offense, that's just how it is. I have a four-year-old son. I know what it's like. The incident that happened, people expressed emotions of, "It's disgusting." They didn't like it. Just raw passion and emotion, just wanting to scream, not being able to express the words that you feel, especially for me, looking at my son. My son loves hugs, he loves kissing on me and calling me daddy and piggyback rides and all that other stuff. But looking at my son and seeing what happened to Mr. Rush, you know, that's something that you think about all the time as a black man, all the time. You know, I've shared some stories about what's happened to me before. Hell, I was even pulled over the night of an election putting out yard signs in precincts. What I'm getting at is, I'm not up here to be anybody's friend, so if you don't know who I am, some of you may know me from when, you know, I saw that there were not too many black mentors in Asheville, so I went and joined an after-school program and started mentoring, and later started running that program, and later became a board member. Some of you may know when...know me as when I saw that there weren't too many black male teachers, as preschool teachers in early childhood education. I went and I did that. When you realize that the policies that are being crafted in your city are not particular to advancing you, people that look like you, or maybe not even that look like you, but just don't have enough money, I jumped out there and I wanted to become a city council member. I'm not apologizing to the police. I'm not apologizing to the chief. We've asked...I've asked several questions. I didn't get the answers that I wanted, and I know a lot of you still got questions and you want answers. And as I look around this room, I'm gonna be honest with you, if it was left up to me, it wouldn't be people sitting in here right now. There wouldn't be some people on the police force sitting where they're sitting right now. I have no apologies for that. For three years, I've been on council, and for three years, three consecutive years, there have been adverse actions by the police that have affected the African-American community. Now, if I can't sit here and talk about it, what can I do? What's the use of me being up here? But it's not just me. It's people in the community, too. You can't just get upset about this and then don't show up nowhere else. Yeah, it's people behind closed doors fighting for you. I'm fighting for you, but I need you to come fight with us, too. I know you're gonna get up here, you're gonna speak, and you gotta say what you gotta say, and people need to hear that, whether it makes them uncomfortable or not, because that's what we're here to do. Sometimes the dialogue ain't always gonna be nice and smooth like you want it to be. It don't work out like that all the time. It doesn't. But what we need you to do is to be at some of these meetings when these things are being said, when you need to have your opinion put on the table. Because I know when I started running for office, I realized for six years, we didn't have any African-American representation, and behind closed doors, there was nobody representing us. And for nearly 25 years, there wasn't a black man sitting there. So if you don't know me, if you don't know what I'm doing around here, I'll take action like this. My father's always taught me, "Speak softly and carry a big stick." Well, the big stick is out. And I just wanna put this in perspective. You know, we got a lot of ideas that people want to do as far as getting the police force where they think it needs to be. Police aren't beyond reproach. They aren't. I feel like, looking at this community right now, we need a lot more African-American police officers. I would like to see, you know, last year, we had this whole, "A million dollars for the people, no money for the police force." I'm just gonna put this out on the table. There are lots of proposals. I wanna see a program based by the police force that promotes minority recruitment with substantial pay. You wanna see change? Come on, join up, like Uncle Sam say, "I want you. I want you." If you don't see the change that you want to see on the police force, what if we could pay you $40,000, and you live here? I want you there. I know I don't want to take up all the time for the people that have come to speak to City Council, but I do want to...I did want to tell you that regardless of who you think I am, or what you may perceive me to be, at the end of the day, I'm fighting for the poor, I'm fighting for my minority folks, and I'm fighting for the disadvantaged. And I'm here, and I got your back, and I got a voice for you, too. But if you can't come fight with me, get out the way.
Use that...step to that center microphone, thank you.
My name's Dan Gilbert, and I am certainly gonna change the subject. I live out on...in a little neighborhood across from the river, from the coal ash plant. The CAMA, I don't know if y'all are familiar with that, Coal Ash Management Act, required that Duke connect everybody on the other side of the river with water to the Asheville Water System. Our community is across the river, there's eight of us, and we are being offered filtration systems that are gonna be something that has to be maintained for like 70 years. There are water lines on Glen Bridge Road Southeast, there's water lines on Hoyt Road, and there's water lines on barely a trail on Glen Bridge Road. And what we...what we're encountering is this new radioactive press release that came out last week about the high radium. We...Duke has tested our wells, and our well and my neighbor's well have high levels of radium 226 and 228 in them, and we don't think the filtration system will take care of that radiation. So what we are...we're requesting two things. We need elected officials, and I know I didn't vote for y'all because I live in the county, but we do spend a lot of money, my wife spends a lot of money, in Asheville. We're asking our elected officials to please put pressure on the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality and Duke Energy to provide the water to us. It'll be a little bit more expensive than the filtration systems, but the great thing is that it will...there's a lot of vacant land around us. We've got pastures and fields and stuff like that. If we get that water line, it will open up a development to over 200 acres, right in that small area next to Glen Bridge Road Southeast. And the other request is, we would like to meet with somebody with the Water Resources Department to try to figure out how we can reduce the cost of getting water to our neighborhood. So I'd like to get a name of somebody that I could meet with and that we can talk to DEQ and Duke about that.
Sure, I'll get your contact information and have the director follow up with you. His name is David Melton.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Good evening, thank you for giving-
Hold on Maggie, please reset the timer. Thank you, sorry.
Good evening, and thanks for letting us all come here today. As you might imagine, I was horrified by the video. I'm a mother of two boys, I'm a grandmother of another, and to think that they have white privilege, it's appalling to me that that even exists. So I wanted to find for you zero tolerance, because you put that in your statement, and you keep saying it, and let me channel the, um, the character Emiko Montoya from, uh, The Princess Bride. "You use these words, but I do not think you know what they mean." Zero tolerance means, if a government or, or organization has a policy, a policy of zero tolerance of a particular type of behavior or activity, they will not tolerate any of it at all. What this means is that it shouldn't take six months to charge a criminal with a crime. If I'd beaten somebody up on video like that, I'd have been charged right then and there. It means that the sergeant who interviewed the victim and called him a liar should no longer have a job. It means that the trainee who participated in the assault should not have a job. That that video came out, and the first reaction I saw was, "Uh-oh, we gotta catch the leaker, that's a crime." That is not zero tolerance of this kind of behavior. I think when you said in that statement that you're angry too, no, you don't get to be angry, you get to be ashamed, and you should get to resign. The buck stops here with the mayor and the vice mayor, and I'm calling for your resignation. Thank you.
So when you come up to speak, please remember to state your name, that was Leslie Boyd. Thank you. It's okay.
My name is Elizabeth Huesman, and I'm actually here tonight, uh, representing Grace Covenant Presbyterian Church. Mayor Manheimer, I believe my comments are gonna be more than three minutes, and I have two people that are willing to give me their time.
Do I, you have two here, and is there anybody else who's willing to cede their time? Uh, who, who's willing to not speak? You're gonna cede your time, and you'll give up the, okay. You've got three, so ten minutes.
Dear mayor and council members, I've attended Grace Covenant Church for seventeen years, and about eighteen months ago, Grace Covenant Presbyterian Church formed the Power and Race Team. This group not only discusses racial justice issues in Asheville and beyond, but also works to help our church actively uproot white supremacy culture in ourselves and in community. In light of Mr. Johnny Rush's beating at the hands of an Asheville police officer, the members of PART and other members of the Grace Covenant Presbyterian Church who have signed this letter feel we must speak. We believe that the city council must take action to address the many failures in leadership and accountability brought to light by the assault on Mr. Rush. We also acknowledge that the flagrant treatment towards Mr. Rush was not an isolated incident. For years, black and brown Asheville residents, as well as white allies, have been asking for city council and staff to address the racist structures, dynamics, and culture that led to this attack. During the attack itself, and then in the days and months following, many more, many mistakes were made that have seriously undermined the public's confidence in the Asheville Police Department and in Asheville government generally. The public can see some of these missteps in the videotape and the actions taken or not taken afterwards. Others may come to light as the national, state, and local investigations proceed. At this point, PART and Grace Covenant Presbyterian members support the following actions in order to rebuild the trust in our community. First one, we support Chief Hooper in her work to make the Asheville Police Department more equitable and transparent. She appears to have recognized as soon as she saw the videotape that Officer Hickman should not continue on the force. We believe that the chief is not the main problem with the incidents surrounding the Rush attack. We also affirm the change Chief Hooper made this week to policies around cases of excessive use of force. It is appropriate, as the new policy states, that such cases automatically trigger a criminal investigation. Now I wanna talk about the organizational chart and your communication lines. In our opinion, the current line of communication in Nashville city government lacks sufficient oversight. We assert that the chief of police should directly report to the city manager and the district attorney, rather than the city, the assistant city manager and assistant district attorney. According to Chief Hooper, she reported Officer Hickman's action to the assistant city manager and the assistant district attorney. However, the city manager, Mr. Jackson, says he did not know about the videotape until the Asheville Citizen Times released it. If that is true, the assistant city manager and assistant district attorney did not escalate these issues as they should have. If the city manager and district attorney had known about this incident, they could have convinced the State Bureau of Investigation to begin an investigation, and they could have communicated with the public proactively, rather than having to react. Now I wanna talk about the role of the Human Relations Commission and city's equity manager, the CPAC. It's an advisory board, but it has no real power. I was at that meeting. The city council has appointed the Blue Ribbon Committee to listen to advisory boards and to s- to suggest solutions. We recommend that council adopt all the recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Committee, including equipping the city equity manager with paid professional support staff. All city staff and city leaders should be committed to and accountable for substantial anti-racism and implicit bias training. The equity manager and the Human Relations Commission must have power to enforce these recommendations, and to hold all city leaders and staff accountable if actions, policies, and cultures do not promote equity. Last thing I wanna talk about, the public needs clear, direct, and timely communication about any incidents of police misconduct. There has been a strong distrust of policing practices among our black and brown citizens for years. The white citizens of Asheville are waking up to and paying attention to this mistrust. In this situation, the communication has been fractured and driven by the disclosures from the Asheville Citizen Times than by the council or mayor. We understand the need for confidentiality around personnel issues, we get it. However, we maintain that effectively communicating facts to the public in a timely manner in contrast to leaks can promote confidence in the leaders of our community. Asheville has a national reputation as a progressive city, but many of our black and brown-bodied brothers and sisters disagree. It is time we live up to this progressive reputation by taking responsibility for the failures in our police department, district attorney's office, city manager's office, and city council. All of the people of this city, especially those who, who have been failed by those who should serve them, need to hear clearly and forcibly what is being done to prevent further unnecessary criminal attacks. Members of Grace Covenant Presbyterian Church are paying attention, and we look forward to your response. And Councilman Young, we're gonna be there right with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got a, so the next three speakers, um, is, uh, the first one is Elvia Diaz, and the next one is Rick Tullis, and the next one is Haven Mitchell. And I, I appreciate everyone being so attentive to each speaker and being respectful of each speaker and not calling out while they're trying to communicate their words to us. Thank you. I'm, I'm, I can hear you, and I would wish that you would be more respectful of the speakers. Okay, I, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave if you can't continue to just listen like everyone else is doing. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elvia Diaz. I am reading a statement of solidarity with Johnny Rush and, and the people of color for Be Loved of Asheville. I am Elvia Diaz, here tonight representing Be Loved of Asheville, Homeless Voice Group. We are here to stand in support and solidarity with Mr. Johnny Rush, and to speak our outrage publicly. We also stand in solidarity with our peers in the community who are targeted for overpolicing, especially those in the African-American and Latinx community. In our very bodies, we represent those who are susceptible to police harassment and brutality in Asheville. We are also African-American, Latinx people, living in poverty and experiencing homelessness. Homeless Voice has been challenging brick-and-window policing for over a year and a half now. We have done this, working by pulling public data, speaking with city staff, and elected officials, and attending public, public safety committee meetings, seeking policy change with our Housing Not Handcuffed Campaign. We have seen thousands of people in our community stopped wearing a backpack and somehow appearing homeless, or because of the color of their skin, for minor offenses like trespassing and jaywalking. This racist and classist behavior governs the streets of Asheville and consigns people into perpetual second-class status, and these charges making it more difficult to find jobs and housing. We will no longer stand by and be targets of state violence and oppression. Enough is enough. We want sweeping changes in Asheville. We are tired of coming to meetings for over a year with no results. We are tired of our simple and cost-saving policy suggestions being ignored. We are tired of people dying in the streets to pay for this oppression at the hands of the police. We have said, and we will say it again, that we need to cut the police budget and fund the people. Put that money into the things that we need in our community. Housing for all, childcare, healthcare, mental health and wellness, living wages, food security, education, and support for our youth. That was our statement for Be Loved of Asheville, this is my personal statement. I think a lot has been said by, by many here already, um, about personal things that I would like to see. This is such a small city. I come from a, a larger city, uh, I lived in Baltimore for a very, very long time. This city has an opportunity to set an example, to lead by example. It has an ability to change. I want the city to lead by example. It knows what to do, you know what to do, we all know what to do, we all need to work together. Come together, work together, let's show this country what it's supposed to do. We can work together.
Thank you. Uh, the next person I've signed up to speak is Rick Tullis. Great, and then Haven Mitchell, and then Sheila Saret.
Good evening, my name is Rick Tullis, and I'm the vice president of Mountain Chapter of the North Carolina Police Benevolence Association. Thank you for having me here. I would like to begin to address some of the concerns regarding some of the early responses and apparent lack of support from city leadership for the Asheville Police Department Chief Hooper. The concerns coming from officers are mainly focused on the lack of confidence from our city's leadership, both elected and non-elected, which creates a dangerous atmosphere for officers to have to work through. Tensions throughout the community have been high due to recent events, and citizens have a right to be upset, and they have a right to be concerned. However, some of the early comments made by a few council members did nothing to help ease those tensions, and some of the comments have been irresponsible and offensive, and some of the language used has created divisiveness and distrust between the department and this city's leadership. These officers have sworn an oath to protect our communities, and they strive each day they report to duty to honor their oaths. The department has made significant gains over the past couple of years under the leadership of Chief Hooper, improving relationships throughout the community, and they place great emphasis on creating trust with the members of the communities they serve. It's imperative that our officers know that they have the support of city leadership, especially during the difficult circumstances such as the ones we are currently facing. Members of the NCPBA met recently with Mayor Manheimer, and we appreciate her coming to the Asheville Police Department to meet with us to hear our concerns. She recognizes that we have been working hard to enhance positive relationships throughout the city, so I would like to thank personally the mayor for your efforts and your apology to us in the email that you sent recently, and I'd also like to thank the rest of city council who sent their support publicly for the police department as well. Our officers are the ones that are out there in our communities every day, risking the most to protect that which you cherish the most, and they deserve your, your careful consideration, rather than some of the reckless political posturing that has occurred recently. Thank you.
All right, the next person is Haven, I think I'm saying that right, it could be Haven Mitchell. Then Sheila Saret, and then Judy Levitt, although I see those folks around here, so.
Hi. Thank you, council, for letting me speak. I'm Haven Mitchell, I've had the opportunity to serve this community for the last four and a half years. And I'm grateful for everything I've learned, and I'm not from here, and it has been eye-opening to see how a community can be. I want to tell you all that I'm terrified right now to be speaking. I know that many officers are not going to speak out of fear of repercussion and belief that it will fall on deaf ears. But I have to, I have a need to speak out against, uh, the, sorry, that I can't stay silent anymore, like lo- much of the community. I can no longer allow the hate and be the only and loudest voice heard against those that, what I work with and for. I want you to know that even with the lack of support expressed and the misrepresentation, misrepresentation of people and information by the media and the public outrage, I will continue to serve, protect, and fight for everything in this community and the victims that I serve. But I also am going to stand by and fight with the officers I work with. I work with a lot of really great people. The uniform makes it easy to dehumanize us and hate, and hate who we are and what we do, and many don't understand the risk we take-
Please be respectful.
... decisions we make, or why we do what we do. I'm human, and I'm heartbroken by all of this. Please don't take away or discount that we are all human, and categorize and judge all of us based on the media. Imagine if you or all were judged, shamed, or destroyed by one stitch of time in your lifetime. We would never learn, grow, or progress. Many don't understand that in this profession, you, there are sayings like, "It's better to be judged by twelve than carried by six, because we have to make decisions in a moment." And those decisions stay with us in the community forever. I love this job, as many of us do, and I'm humbled by the opportunity to do it, and I do it altruistically, but I need to know that I'm not alone in doing this job. I do it altruistically, but I need to know that I'm not alone in doing this job.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sheila Saret, downtown Asheville resident, and this is my hometown. The citizens of Asheville are entitled to know who in government knew about the beating. We are entitled to know what they knew and when they knew it. Those who knew and covered it up in order to secure their reelection do not deserve the position of trust they hold. The members of city council who didn't know about the beating and cover-up should resign. They have, they have failed to represent us, to protect us, and to foster confidence in our government. The police chief, the mayor, and Gary Jackson has failed the citizens of Asheville. The citizens of Asheville deserves better. In 2019, North Carolina's Senate Bill 285, Asheville City Council will become districts, which means city council will now be held accountable. Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Judy Levitt, and then after that is Mark Ward and Daniel Breen.
I yield my time later to the tenement clerk.
Okay, okay. So then the next person is Mark Ward.
Members of council, we invite, there are five of us clerks that can gather and have a statement we would wish to make.
Do you, did you each want to speak, or did you just want to?
I think we would have a series of statements where they'll all come together as one statement. I think it would be more expeditions for us to just say.
Sure, okay, everybody good with that? We're going to jump out of line here a little? Great, come on.
Thank you.
If you could each introduce yourself, that would be fabulous.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Council. I'm Elsie Ray, Dr. Elsie Ray, Senior Pastor of Deviency Baptist, as well as CEO of One Youth at a Time Incorporated. The question is, who are we? We are Faith for Justice Asheville, an interfaith group of clergy and faith leaders from one synagogue, 11 churches, seven denominations, other faith-based ministries and justice groups. Our mission is to provoke justice for Black, Brown-bodied people. Thank you.
City Council, my name is Frank Goldsmith, and I'm here on behalf of Congregation Beth Israel and Carolina Jews for Justice. What do we do? Faith for Justice gathers to pray, reflect, discern, and act to address systemic injustices and white supremacy in all of our institutions, including our own faith communities.
Mayor Manheimer and Vice Mayor Whistler and council members, I'm the Reverend Dr. Marcia Mount Schup, and I'm the Pastor, Head of Staff at Grace Covenant Presbyterian Church. I've just passed out a copy of our statement. Why are we here? We are here tonight because we want justice and safety for Johnny Jermaine Rush and every other Black and Brown-bodied person, homeless person, and person living in poverty in Asheville who remain in constant fear of police and state-sanctioned violence. We are here to acknowledge that impacted community members have brought issues of overpolicing, excessive force, and racial profiling to the attention of city council and staff, and that responses to their requests have been minimal and ineffective. We are grateful to Chief Hooper for immediately implementing a policy last week that requires a criminal investigation of all police officers who use excessive force, and we believe that simple policy changes like this one on both the local and state level need to be explored further and implemented. The abuse of Johnny Jermaine justice is not an isolated incident, nor is this new but reflects long-term patterns of the abuse of power and white supremacy that must change. Recommendations from the Asheville Buncombe NAACP Criminal Justice Committee, from the Racial Justice Coalition, the Blue Ribbon Committee, Clergy United for Righteousness and Justice, Be Loved Asheville Housing Not Handcuffs Campaign, A Million Dollars for the People Campaign, Asheville Black Lives Matter Movement for Black Lives Platform, Carolina Jews for Justice, the Equity Inclusion Department, and Cross-Agency Protocol, and residents at Count, excuse me, Countless, Citizens Police Advisory, and Public Safety Committee Meetings, all need to be taken seriously, and the wisdom of their suggestions need to be honored. We are here to proclaim our intention as faith leaders to hold accountable institutions of government created for the common good, and those in positions of power who have been caught in the web of white supremacy. We know that the challenges we face are bigger than any one individual, and these challenges demand the attention from every single one of us if we hope to see change.
Members of council, my name is Mark Ward. I'm Lead Minister of the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of Asheville. So the question is, what we want as a, as a group? What we want is a city of Asheville where white supremacy is acknowledged, and people and institutions commit to dismantling it so that Black and Brown-bodied people have the opportunity to abundant life that God so hopes for everyone.
Mayor Manheimer and fellow council members, I am Todd Donatelli, Dean of the Cathedral of All Souls in Asheville. What you can expect from us is that we will continue to deepen relationships, cross boundaries, break down walls, build community, and seek out collaborative partners working for the common good and ways for our city to move forward. Faith for Justice will listen and walk with impacted communities first. We will pray for our community and our elected officials, and we will speak truth to power out of our deep love for humanity. We acknowledge the deep harm that white supremacy perpetuates on Black and Brown bodies. We acknowledge the harm white people have done and how white supremacy has poisoned white people as well. We will continue to expose that white privilege harms and dehumanizes every human being. And last, you can expect us to return to support and share specific policy and resource recommendations as we listen to people most impacted by overpolicing and structural white supremacy in the city of Asheville. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I've signed up to speak is Daniel Breen, and then Casey Campfield, who I know is already in here, and Dee Williams, who I know is already in here as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I guess you can. Yes, my name is Daniel Breen. I will try to make sure I do this correctly. It's been a while. I want to address one thing that the officer back there said, that y'all are being mean to him or something, or not showing support, or whatever. I was in the Army. You know what my drill sergeant said one time? He said, "If you want to find sympathy, it's in the dictionary between two words," and I don't think it's an appropriate place to say those words, but I'm sure you can figure it out. So in other words, if you don't like the working environment, then either make it better or quit.
That's right.
And then, I saw in the Citizen Times, VJ, you, you had your thing, oh, change takes time. Oh, change takes time.
It's been 500 years.
All right, ma'am, please.
There was a man named Vernon Johns. I'm sure you two know who Vernon Johns is, and they didn't like at the Montgomery Church what Vernon Johns had to say, so they fired him because, oh, he's too radical, he's too much this and too much that. They got a man in there that they thought they could control, that they thought, he's 26 years old, we can just kind of shove him around. Y'all may have heard of Martin Luther King, and in, oh, what was it, 13 years? By the time they killed him in 1968, I think he did a pretty good job and changed things. I'm hoping it doesn't take us another 13 years to fix this. And here's another thing, why are you still here? Why are you still here?
Please address your comments to council.
Okay, why is he still here? Why is the city manager who, and the assistant city manager, who couldn't bother to tell you, "I had to talk to Ms. Smith," and, and she said, "Oh, I didn't find out about this until Wednesday." I'm sure that's when all the rest of you did. Well, according to what I read and what I was told, it went up the chain of command, and she told you all, and you decided that, oh, well, heck, it's no big deal. We won't say anything. Here's another thing, you don't have liability insurance. I don't know if you know that or not, but back in the 90s, when they were all being slick and everything, they decided that, well, heck, we'll save a little money here and a little money there and do, and like that, and not have liability insurance. So when Johnny Rush sues the city, and he will, I can pretty well guarantee that, you can pay, hmm, I don't know, we'll throw out a nice round number, like $50 million, out of city funds.
Thank you.
So have fun with all that.
Last Wednesday, Chief Hooper said she would resign if she was asked to, if it would help with this terrible debacle. That is the only thing she has said during her tenure that I agree with. Chief Hooper has failed to address systemic racism in the department and needs to go. This whole few bad apples argument is nonsense, and you know it. Let's revisit some news headlines to clarify. Quote, "No Big Policy Changes After Race Traffic Stop Analysis." This, of course, refers to a broad data analysis which revealed that Black drivers are stopped 50% more than white drivers in Asheville and are 100% more likely to be searched than white drivers, even though white drivers accounted for a higher frequency of contraband. Here's another headline, quote, "Asheville's Police Force Is Much Whiter Than Community." At the time this article was written, just a couple of years ago, African-Americans made up just 7% of the force. Last year, the police department happily announced a new wave of cadets, all of whom were white. The APD website lauded the, quote, "diversity of the new recruits." I'm not kidding, they said diversity. In 2016, Sergeant Radford killed Jerry Williams under questionable, very questionable circumstances. Hooper's heavy-handed response to the ensuing protests included locking up a journalist present to cover the events. Hooper also repeatedly came to the defense of Officer Oza, who threw a Black teenager to the ground and pulled an AR-15 assault rifle on a group of unarmed Black teenagers. Officer Hickman's horrible assault on Mr. Rush was suppressed by Hooper, and an opportunity for an FBI investigation was squandered. Only when footage was leaked to the, to the press did this matter come before the public. Does this sound like a series of isolated incidents to you? Who keeps picking these bad apples? Who trains them? Who provides them oversight? Who keeps providing cover for them when they begin to rot? Nothing is going to change until the department is reorganized from the highest levels down, until there's meaningful oversight from the council and from the community, until there are actual repercussions for the abuses. This wasn't part of my original speech, but I would like to add something. I've been coming to council meetings for about three years now. When I entered the building, you had four times as many police officers here in the building than usual. For what? These people have gathered to speak peacefully about policy changes and practices, right? You've responded with a show of force. It's intimidation, plain and simple, and every opportunity, you're eroding the public trust. Just knock it off.
I have Dee Williams next, and then Ian Mance, and then Sharon Sumerall.
I'm giving my minutes to Sharon Sumerall to Robert Sager.
Okay, so Dee, if you're here. Do we have anyone downstairs still?
I don't know whether there's somebody downstairs.
Mayor, I think that there are some in there that said.
I know.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
You want me to just wait until she comes back?
I have.
There are people down there, Mayor, but everybody has signed up that wants to speak, and I did see some for Dee.
You didn't see any?
I did see some.
You don't?
Dee, I've got Sarah Skinner ceding her time to you, and Kate Tenen. Are either of you here? It doesn't really matter. I mean, if they're down, they're probably in overflow. Is there anybody else who'll cede their time to Dee so she can have 10 minutes? Thank you.
Okay, my name is Dee Williams. I just wanted to say that philosophically, and I don't want to get too deep, in a democracy, guardians are accorded a status above and beyond anybody else. I just heard someone talk about fighting. We want to get away from a warrior mentality to a guardian mentality, okay? First of all, let me just say that my tenure as the Chair of the NAACP Criminal Justice Committee ended last month, so today I guess I'm here representing a lot of people who retired from law enforcement, specifically NOBLE, the National Organization of Black Executives in Law Enforcement. And I want to just say that basically what I'm here to tell you is that we need to latch on to something consistent. You've been given a plethora of ideas, which are fine, and I salute the work of all the local organizations, but 21st century policing is something that's been proven to work. What I've done, and I will send this electronically to Maggie, your city clerk, is send the tenants of it and also an implementation book, because 21st century policing goes to the heart of what a guardian is all about. It gets away from that thin blue line and all that secrecy and all of the us versus them, and that's what's wrong. We haven't really had a conversation in Asheville about systemic racism. We haven't had a conversation about how those of us who speak truth to power are excluded, irregardless of our color and class. So one of the things that I want you to know that we've noted by data is that despite all of the disjointedness and all of the attempts, our numbers tend to escalate. And Ian is going to give you, I guess, some traffic stop data in his presentation, but what I wanted to say was that 21st century policing also tends to the wellness of officers. It talks about building community trust. It talks about having respect for people regardless of where they come from, but because they are human, we talk about humanism. And one of the things that I want to do too is talk about the fact that I want to uplift the leaker. Captain Stony Gontz, who's a personal friend of mine. Captain Gontz represents the very best of the Asheville Police Department. There is not an officer that you have here that can touch Stony Gontz. He's educated, he's kind, he's resourceful, and he's a man who will speak the truth. And obviously, when he leaked what was going on in this department, he did speak truth to power. So instead of one lawsuit with Mr. Rush, with the city having a whistleblowing statute, hopefully you have, you may have another lawsuit. So I ask that you restore him, Stony Gontz, and without any type of harassment. I want to also say that a lot of us are not even included in a lot of the committees that you folks put together, and that's because we do speak truth. We don't take grant money from you, a lot of us. There are some conflicts of interest. As I look on some of these committees, there should be some borrowing characteristics, and one of them is the fact that a lot of these organizations take grant funds. Let's just talk about ethics. That's another thing the police department needs to be taught, and all of us who pretend to lead. Ethics, and talking about how we need to act even if we think nobody is looking. I don't think if there weren't for Stony Gontz, we wouldn't even know about this. I doubt it very seriously. We need to talk about this. We need to talk about the way we treat people. And by the way, folks, you cannot serve people if you do not love them. We don't feel your love. And I certainly, let me just say this, as long as I was the NAACP Criminal Justice Chair, you know, you work with folks, you propose low-cost, no-cost measures, you hope that you educate, and that people eventually will come around. There are some people who are resentful towards change, and institutions like police departments do tend to be that way. And so you have to have a program that is not pulled from all quadrants and something that's piecemeal. You need something like. You need something like 21st century policing, where everybody is held to account, and there are measures and benchmarks. It's consummate, and it stresses community engagement. One of the things that I cautioned the chief against was using flawed models of technology to discriminate against folks by saying that these are crime hotspots, and it would justify upping the Black Collie Hill crest an entire census block. I don't know how we get to that. But the fact of the matter is, is that you can't do that. There has to be standard datasets and methodologies to arrive at that, to make sense. So just putting this information into a computer and then saying that I can justify overpolicing by virtue of the fact that this is a crime hotspot without instituting community policing, community-oriented policing, and showing data is not accurate. So there are some other things that you've been fed, and I did see your reports, and that stuff just doesn't make sense in the real world. The other thing, and I'm going to close, because I want to send the report out. I know y'all are going to do whatever the hell you want to do, because you've been doing it. You're going to do it. But the result is going to be a community that's fully second-class. I've lived here off and on all of my life, except for having to go off to school various times. And I'm going to tell you something. I've never seen the black community in a worse economic and social position as it is today. So you need to understand that, and we've got the data to back it up. The other thing is, you've got sons, and we've got daughters. And let me tell you something. The police don't give a damn if you're a black man or a black woman. They will brutalize you, and I know that. I've been brutalized here as well. So it doesn't, it's more so men who are, understand this skin, and, and the current policing takes, context is bent from slavery, where we had slave catchers. We've got to get away from that. The slave patrols. That's where it comes from, and it can be documented. Which is why we need to go to 21st century policing. This is a wave of the future in most progressive cities like Austin, Texas, that y'all have traveled to, other city councils haven't have looked at. You cannot let the tail wag the dog. Some committees, like the Racial Justice Committee, I remember when the chief chose what organization. You don't let people do that. That's insanity. The police cannot police the police. So there are a lot of things that y'all do you're not held to account. But that is not going to work anymore. And then, I think you can find it even in the Asheville Citizen Times, where it was a reference to the Racial Justice Committee took a step back simply because some folks weren't allowed on the committee. Folks like me, okay? But I don't need to be on your committee, because I don't come up here and tell you what I got to tell you every time. And basically, work where I'm needed. But let me tell you, you're doing a great disservice. Blacks in Asheville, economically, socially, medically, fare worse than any blacks in the state of North Carolina. And our children are also dead last. So this is not a, a good place for people of color who look like me, both black and brown, to live. You just need to know that. This is a tale of two cities, and it rests in your lap. If we go back to what we had, it's going to happen again. I did warn the chief that overpolicing in public housing is going to render somebody dead or injured, and it did. So with that, I just ask you to take a look at 21st century policing. It is a wave of the future. Our police officers are worth the investment. The black community is worth the investment. I know you don't think we count for much, and that obviously by our numbers and our, and your actions. You think we don't, but everybody is watching Asheville. And I am so glad that the New York Times came in here. We've got folks here from Spartanburg who care, Washington DC. It made the media, and I'm so glad. And we look forward to bringing some more activists in here from out of town to help give us some stiffening, just some stiffening, stiffening stuff in our spine. Because we've had the life taken out of us. I'm one of them who doesn't quit, because I've got some resources that a lot of people don't have. But I'm not going to be quiet, because I don't owe my existence to anybody. I work for myself. So, the reason why I'm not quite as affable as a lot of people is all my capital assets are paid for, and I work for myself. So with that, I'm going to fight the good fight. I expect for you to look at 21st century policing. You've looked at a lot of people. The tail has wagged the dog one time too many. Take back control, and be accountable to the people. The people are the police. We are the police. This is not, they serve us. We do not serve them. You serve us. We do not serve you. Act like it. If you want to be on council, you signed up for this. So you act like it. Because I'll be out there running, and I'm an incumbent killer. You know I am. I'll see you somewhere. Thank you.
Thanks, Dee. After Ian is Sharon Summarall, and then Robert Zachary.
My name is Ian Mance. I'm a staff attorney at the Southern Coalition for Social Justice in Durham. And I run the Open Data Policing website at opendatapolicing.com. Chief Hooper gave an interview this week with WLOS, where she said that Mr. Rush should not have even been stopped, that the entire incident from start to finish was problematic. And I agree with that. She seemed to concede in this interview that there are certain low-level discretionary law enforcement activities that are more trouble than they're worth, that they cause more trouble than, than they do solve problems. A year ago this month, I was standing right here at the invitation of then-councilman Bothwell. Dee Williams had introduced us, and I gave a presentation to the council on traffic stops. And at the time, I told you that African-American drivers in Asheville were about 50% more likely to be searched, 100% more likely to be stopped than their white counterparts. And Mayor Manheimer, you were quoted in the paper the next day referring to these statistics as an emergency. So I wanted to give the council an update on where the statistics stand. One year since, you passed on the opportunity to follow through and implement the recommendations that the NAACP committee brought to you. And I believe Councilman Young, if I remember correctly, was one of the only council members at the time who encouraged action on these points. Since I was here last year, the search rate for black motorists in the city of Asheville have doubled from 2016 to 2017. 11% of black motorists stopped by the police last year were searched. That is the highest search rate for black motorists anywhere in the state of North Carolina, of any city the size of Asheville or larger. And it's significantly larger. The next highest black search rate would be the city of Raleigh at 7%. For the year of 2017, Asheville Police Department posted its most racially disparate stop and search data in the 15 years that the department has reported its data. Black drivers made up 46% of all people searched last year by Asheville police officers, despite, again, being found with contraband less frequently than white drivers. Black drivers represented a quarter of all traffic stops in Asheville last year, despite black residents making up about 12% of the population, and there's reason to believe that the percentage of drivers is lower. Regulatory stops, I would, I know my time is about to expire. I would really urge you to revisit this recommendation to prohibit officers from engaging in these low-level discretionary regulatory stops, and that you look into the written consent to search policy that is currently in place in Durham, in Fayetteville, and a number of cities around the state. I think that Asheville's numbers are clearly trending in the wrong direction. In many, by many metrics, they're worse than anywhere else. This is an opportunity for you to, to take a second look, and I would urge you to do so.
Sharon Summarall.
I'm Chaplain Zachary, and Sharon Summarall, and two other people.
Okay, is Sharon here? Sharon? Uh, who, and, okay, Robert, I've got you next. The, who's the other two people? And your names? Did you sign, did you sign sheets? No, okay, you didn't sign sheets? All right.
Excuse me, I need somebody to cede their time to Asheville Black Last Night.
Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith. When it's your turn to speak, you will have an opportunity to do that.
I don't know where I am on the list, so I need to straighten that out.
Ms. Smith, please.
No, no, no.
Thank you. It's been a while since I've been here. It was probably back in 2011. I remember some of your faces, some I don't. One reason I don't come is black folk don't come nowhere that they don't feel nobody's going to listen to them.
Yes, absolutely.
And I remember that of my elders and my ancestors, and I follow that line. And I'm not really convinced that you are listening today, because I've been in this city for 15 years, and this kind of stuff has been going on for this long. And I know before I came here. So I, I, I wonder if I should really say anything, or if I should just shut my mouth and just moan for 10 minutes. Because in the meeting the other night, that's one thing that we were saying, is that we are tired of being tired. And I'm, I ain't begging nobody. I ain't begging nobody to hear me. I will give you this warning and prophecy. When you get black folk being quiet and not saying anything, you better watch out. When you get a human soul not saying anything, because something is moving in the spirit, and that tiredness will come forth as a shock that you've never known about. I hear, since I've been in this city, it has been things like, "Why black folk don't come downtown Asheville?" And I began to say to liberal whites, "Ask yourself." But I would tell you, we're tired of being tired. We're tired of having to appeal for the other side of the color cascade to just be human, have human decency. Something that should be inbred. And I would say that if it is not, it's not only something wrong with the police system, it's something wrong with the people who hire the police. It's something wrong with the system that would create a police force to run down other human souls. And that started in 1619. And here it is, 2018, it is still going on. So we have to re-establish, as Dee Williams so eloquently explained, we have to redefine and restructure the police force. And so, in this setting, I'm not sure if anything can be done, but I, I have some recommendations here. I would like to appeal to this city, to the city council, to the whole city of Asheville. Let's stop being the definition of what Einstein defined as craziness. Please. When you do the same thing over and over again... Now, I'm not going to even finish. And that is what we have done, and this system in America has done the same thing. We react to black people the same way. Now, I will tell you, I do not accept Kant, because my indigenous teachers and my ancestors taught me not to accept Kant. So don't tell me you can't do it. America, don't tell me you can't do it. Because when America and the airlines bombed the hell out of Europe, out of Germany, what did they do? They went there and created the Marshall Plan, and they did it. If you can do it the way you can do it at home, I would tell you, I, I am all over the page. And that's what the doctor said in seminary. I can't stay on one subject. I would tell you this. There have been thousands of Mr. Rush. And it's going to be a few more. But there is something happening that I would like to appeal to you about, and that is, why don't the council, along with the police department and the citizens of this city, try it different? And redefine ourselves like Einstein and the other greats of your culture and mine wanted us to. Okay? Asheville has the reputation of being the California of the East and the Europe of the West. Why don't we live up to it? Because I would tell you, if we keep accepting this BS, all of a sudden, the tourist industry is going to know. That's my prophecy. And I will let you know, we can do it differently by selecting the city council, selecting a task force, a real task force. It has been done in other cities. I, I've never understood, and I, I said it in a meeting here three or four years ago, how is the police going to teach home training? Okay? So, I'm saying the city council, call the community together, stop going out there to, and I love everybody, but stop going out there to UNCA and getting our profound professors. Go come in the neighborhood and get some grassroots black folk, some community leaders, who have been community leaders all their lives. They might live in the high-rises of the projects, but they got some wisdoms that our ancestors gave us, and nobody can take it away. If you want to do it, you can. That's what King said. That's what Gandhi said. That's what Lincoln said. Why don't we get out of this liberal, white, whatever?
Racist denial is what it is.
Get out of that, because in a sense, liberalism can be just as defective as white bigotry. So we need to look at it. And if you want to say in the 21st century, let's start a dialogue. I said this with the last mayor. I was almost sit down. The preachers and the churches need to start talking to the members who are not theirs, and come out of their doors and unlock their doors. And schools need to be able to invite people like me, instead of these white supremacists, to speak to the children. We need to find a dialogue of peace. We need to find a dialogue whereby we can get something done. We need to empower each other. As what was spoken, "You serve us. That's why we elected you." And that's the system of democracy it's supposed to be. That's what they told us. I serve my sons. That's why they take care of me today. If we begin a dialogue, we can get somewhere. Thank you.
The next speaker I have signed up to speak is Moira Gori. Did you just wave your... But it's not, it's, you're not next, but I just, that was, are you Moira?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. So the next person... So the next person is Sonia Morgan.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sonia Morgan. I come to you tonight as the mother of a victim of a similar crime as, uh, Johnny Rush. Last July, police were serving an involuntary commitment order on my son, who was suicidal and struggling with mental illness. After the police handcuffed and shackled my son, he was beaten, stomped, and kicked, resulting in a broken shoulder blade, swelling on the brain, a black eye, and the imprint of an officer's boot along his jawline. With this experience, I can share in the pain of the families, in the pain of these black families and the families of Johnny Rush, but it also happens in the white community and the mentally ill community. I want police body cam footage reviewed as soon as an incident occurs at a regular basis. Victims need to have a resource to access where they can feel safe to share their experiences outside of the law enforcement agency that perpetrated the crime to begin with. Furthermore, there needs to be a citizens review board. I feel like this will be a critical element in holding these rogue law enforcement officers accountable. Not only has this added to trauma, added to my son's, um, mental illness trauma, but it has had a negative impact on our family and the community as a whole. Police brutality has got to stop and it's time, but the accountability for these rogue officers begins. Thank you.
I have a lot of time.
Camille McCarthy. I'm sorry, after Camille, uh, I'm sorry, Camille is Pastor Chris Webb.
Hello, uh, my name is Camille McCarthy, and I am here representing the Western North Carolina Green Party to share with the council members and mayor our thoughts on the most recent police brutality incident, a heinous injustice that should not have been covered up for the past six months. Council members have stated that they knew nothing of the incident, implying either ignorance, negligence, deceit, or all three. The fact that this incident was not included in the agenda for today's meeting speaks volumes. This is not the first incident, and it will not be the last, when the buck has been passed at every turn. Now that the national attention has been brought to our town, you cannot pretend that we do not have a problem. For this incident in particular, there was no accountability, and the public remained uninformed until a video was illegally leaked. There is neither accountability nor transparency in our current structure, especially when it comes to policing, and this is our primary concern for the immediate future. The following are our demands for further action to ensure that this problem is not simply swept under the rug now that you have been reelected. Number one, those involved in covering up this incident should step down. While Chief Hooper's involvement in this incident greatly concerns us, her offer to step down as police chief is the sole example we have seen of leadership and accountability since the tape was leaked. Unless Gary Jackson, city manager, can prove that he knew nothing of this incident, he should step down or be removed without, without receiving his pension. A full independent investigation should be conducted to hold all parties accountable. Number two, drop all investigations into the leaker. We would like to publicly thank the person who came forward with this video. Number three, the extra one million dollars allocated to the police force was a gross mistake. This money should be immediately reallocated to community programs supporting disenfranchised and oppressed communities. Number four, make body cam videos public property. They should be viewed regularly by community members so that the public is aware of the actions of our police force. Number five, any officer who displays violent and racist tendencies must be removed from APD immediately. The entire hiring and training process for APD, uh, must be rebooted from the bottom up. Number six, immediately implement the low-cost, no-cost policy changes suggested by Ian Mance of the Southern Coalition for Social Justice. Number seven, although nothing can fully compensate Mr. Rush for the horrific injuries done to his person, there should be reparations made to him and his family for this egregious act of violence, both by the APD and the city of Asheville. Number eight, create a citizen oversight committee of the police that actually has the authority to affect APD policy. Number nine, with support from Code for Asheville and PRC applications, police data should remain open and available to citizens. Number ten, demilitarize the police. There is no need for our police forced to have military-grade equipment. We demand transparency around the military equipment received by APD, and we demand that APD stops receiving such equipment. There's much more that could be done to expose this injury and hold those responsible fully accountable, um, but it is time to say-
If you have any other written comments, you can hand them to Maggie, and she'll pass them around to us. Thank you.
Thanks.
Pastor Chris Webb, uh, and then after, after, uh, let me just ask one question. Ashley Cooper has, uh, that, she's ceding her time to Carmen Ramos Kennedy. Is Ashley still here? No, okay. So then the next person is Dewana Little after you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Pastor Chris Webb. I'm the senior pastor of St. Mark's Lutheran Church. I rise to, uh, say that I add my voice in support of the Racial Justice Coalition and Faith for Justice Leaders. I also want to say that I'm praying for all of you. Just praying for wisdom, praying for courage. It's a lot to absorb, and, um, I'm praying for our community. Our congregation is partnered with WNC Baptist Fellowship, a predominantly African-American congregation. Reverend Elsie Ray and I are friends, and just as two simple pastors, we're trying to bring black and white folks together to listen and learn from each other, to see the humanity in one another, and hopefully provide some healing in our community. I hope that everyone here tonight is doing something within their home, within their neighborhood, within this community, to try to be a part of the solution. So, thank you. I'm praying for you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, you're after Dewana.
Good evening, City Council. I am Dewana Little, as y'all see me a lot. Um, but I'm here to talk about the misrepresentation of how the buck is being passed with this situation to, this is something that has been stated from newspaper articles to the community meetings, that the HRC is this, this saving committee that's going to fix these issues. That's not accurate at all. Being, I was a part of developing that HRC, and the powers are limited. So I would like, I would like to ask that y'all be a little bit more intentional and not misleading the community to think that the HRC is going to have powers that it's not going to have, thanks to our recognition of what we can and can't do. So, um, unless y'all are willing to endow this HRC with the power to influence the changes that we as a community need to see as far as addressing these policing, policing issues, which we have CPAC that does not have the power to do that. So unless it's going to be some kind of charter change to really endow this HRC with the power to really address these issues that is being channeled to, oh, when the HRC will be an avenue to deal with these issues, when that's not the reality.
That's right.
The reality is, it's another powerless committee. So I'm appealing to y'all, because it just went in front of boards and commissions, I'm appealing to y'all to endow this HRC with the power to influence the changes, to really be a HRC and, uh, and really helping the community to deal with these issues. These issues are not getting smaller, they are getting bigger and more drastic. This is not the first incident like this. I'm born and raised here. I can think of friends that's been murdered, you know what I mean, unarmed. Like, I, I, I'm from here, so this is not the first time. And it, it gets, it's hurtful, and it's emotional, and everybody is wrapped in these emotions. No, it's not necessarily just the chief of police, um, problem. She, oh, she's the fallout person right now. She's the person that's, oh, let's ask for her resignation. I honestly am my, as a community member, and as somebody who's doing this work, who's dealing with the community, day in and day out, who's living this, can honestly say, she's the one I've seen the most out of all the police chiefs. It's been one consistent thing that has been consistent with all four of the police chiefs, and that's our city manager and the lack of management of our police and department, the lack of accountability. How are we supposed to feel protected when the people who are supposed to protect and serve us is the ones that's hurting us? But then you want us to speak out and tell the police, and if you see this, report this, and do this, and do that, when they're supposed to protect and serve us, and that's not what happens? I live in Earthskin. When I call, it may take forty-five minutes for them to show up. Let's get real about the situation, let's take the blinders off, sign, open our eyes and see it for what it is.
Um, so, at this point, I, Ms. Smith, I know has folks that want to cede their time. If you have not already ceded your time, who, tell me if you would like to cede your time to Ms. Smith. Tell me, have you signed one of these sheets?
Uh huh.
Tell me your name.
Kristen Smith Norman.
Okay.
I want to know how you pushing me back. I've been sitting here all this time, and I was behind the car, coming together, and still I can't push through the back. That's why I want, I want to know if I'm seeing time enough in practice, I want to know how I can push back. Yeah, I signed up. She won't let you on second chance to call.
He's next. Last name or first name?
He's next, man. I'm willing to let him speak next.
No, you go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Howell, you are next. I don't know, these were the order they were given to me, and I'm trying to keep them in order. I'm sorry. Do you want to switch with him?
What do you all want to do?
It's up to you.
I'm willing to let, uh, him speak first.
He's saying, you go ahead. Okay. So back to this, thank you very much, Mr. Howell. See, who else wants to cede their time? I have a few people that just said they wanted to cede their time to Black Lives Matter, so are we going to let that count?
Well, I'm speaking for Black Lives Matter.
You are, okay, then, then let's do that, that, fine.
Okay, and there are probably some other folks from Black Lives Matter here too.
No, I've got plenty, I've got plenty of that.
Um, okay, so I don't need to reiterate what's already been said before, it's good stuff. So I'm going to move on to, um, just, um, affirming that, yes, this is a pattern of systemic white supremacy and racism in the city of Asheville, not just in the police department. Um, and we have seen it in every area of human activity throughout the city. This is systemic racism and how it operates in Asheville. It's not a new thing. The only thing that's new now is the cameras and the outside press. Um, so, um, Black Lives Matter is pretty much fed up with people making excuses for the blatant anti-black racism practiced in this city. We demand that it be stopped immediately, beginning with holding accountable those city officials who have obviously abused their authority in order to maintain the citywide reign of racial terror against black citizens. And that's what it is, is racial terror that you all have allowed to go on unchecked. Uh, with a shout out to the ten-point program of the original Black Lives Matter party, uh, the original Black Panther Party, Asheville Black Lives Matter is calling for several things. One, stop killing us. Stop hunting us. We want an immediate end to police brutality and extrajudicial murders of black people in Asheville. We want all APD officers with excessive force in their professional personnel files to face immediate disciplinary action, and those trained by Chris Hickman, who should never have been allowed to train anyone, to be retrained. We want the police chief, Tammy Hooper, to resign or be fired immediately. We want the city manager, Gary Jackson, to immediately vacate his position. We want Todd Williams, the district attorney, to cede his seat to someone qualified to identify and prosecute human rights violations and hate crimes against Asheville's black citizens. We want Esther Mannheimer, the mayor, to vacate her seat, followed by a special election to ensure that Asheville voters have an opportunity to elect someone who is committed to dismantling white supremacy and the culture of systemic racial violence in Asheville. We want reparations for all the property and black-owned businesses the city of Asheville took from the black community by eminent domain, real estate speculation, tax fraud, urban renewal, and gentrification. Finally, we call for an economic boycott of Asheville until we get what we want. Just don't come here. Don't stay in the hotels, don't eat in the restaurants, and don't drink the beer until Black Lives Matter here. We are aware that the city of Asheville will ultimately do whatever it wants to do to maintain white control of the city, regardless of what Asheville Black Lives Matter sees as appropriate and necessary action steps to rectify this ongoing problem of institutionalized white violence against Asheville's black citizens. We live here, and we know y'all, some of you folks are paid activists working for nonprofits funded by white money. We know that among people who have been racially oppressed and traumatized for generations, it's easy to find agreeable Negroes when you want one. These folks are, um, all over Asheville, and, and, uh, where was I? Uh, they are conditioned to fear angry white folks, and just like abused children, they defer to and defend their oppressors. And we have seen them every time, that these are the people that the city council and the various different agencies pick to be on their boards and commissions, because they don't want to hear from Asheville Black Lives Matter. Dee Williams spoke to it. But it's a pattern, it is part of the pattern. What else did I want to say? Um, we have a bunch of white so-called progressives in this city also, okay? And what I want to say about these folks is, some of these folks were out in the street screaming and yelling, "End white supremacy" with us after Jerry Williams was murdered, okay? But the same folks are talking about saving the police chief's job. So let me ask you this question. What does ending white supremacy mean to y'all? Does it mean that you're going to be willing to, uh, to, to, to make sure that a sexual predator loses his job and is charged and put away for the rest of his life, but, but not racial predators? Think about that for a minute. Because what we have is racial predators working for the police department, and people who are colluding and allowing that to continue, engaging in cover-ups, protecting people, who should be long gone. We should not tolerate it. Zero tolerance for racial predators in this city. And that's what we have. We have a city that preys on black people in order to benefit itself economically, socially, and politically. I mean, that's just the truth. We've seen it. We have data to prove it. Dee Williams and Ian Mance have, have, have given you all the data you need. We know what the story is. The trick is, what are you going to do about it? We're not tolerating it anymore, just don't come to Asheville. We don't want you here until we get what we want. We want justice, and our Black Lives Matter to us.
Um, and after Mr. Howell, I have Joe Minicozy, I don't know if he's in the overflow room or not, and then Jay Springer.
My name is Paul Howell, and before I get started, I got one young woman back in this city, me her time, and I had some orders downstairs that see me at time, they haven't made it up here yet.
You can have the best of my time, brother Paul.
Mr. Howell, I, I need you to have three people that will cede their time to you.
One, two, three, four.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Okay.
If you can't, if you can't have previously ceded your time, I thought that we had new people. Raise your hands again. Yours, okay. Just three, just three, who have not previously ceded their time. So, I, I think we got it. Yeah, I got it, yeah, okay, go for it.
Okay, so I can speak now?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm a city council. I am deeply disturbed and very upset that this city is ran by people that make all these high salaries and claim accountability for nothing. Now, when Chief- Now, when Chief Hooper came around, I got to step back, when Chief Hooper came around saying that she showed this footage to everybody, this person, that person, that person, but yet still, nobody knows, nobody want to claim responsibility for anything. So I'm wondering, why are y'all sitting in the positions, not just y'all, Gary Jackson over here, why are y'all sitting in y'all's position that y'all sitting in if y'all can't do your jobs?
That's right.
Y'all making all this money for what? Off our misery? Because, hey, well, I don't want to do this, I don't want to do that, I'm not going to tell this person that? Come on. Asheville has been without a black voice in this place for a long time. Now you got two people in the community, on the council, but yet still, nobody feels what they say, nobody feels their point, nobody feels our pain. I sit up here, I sit back there and watch everybody, I've been sitting back there watching people. Everybody looks up and pays attention, except for you, because you don't care about nothing that we have to say in here.
Mr. Howell?
That's why you need to go.
Will you please?
Well, I'm going, I'm going, I'm still saying what I'm saying, let me speak my truth.
Oh, yeah, no, I just ask you to address your comments to council, please, thank you.
Well, nobody pays attention to nothing, nobody got to say in here but him. So I'm addressing the council like that. I can understand people want to save Chief Hooper's job, but in all honesty, Chief Hooper has not done what she should be doing as a police chief and a leader. Now, not only are the black people in this community oppressed, held down, held back, looked at for everything, but also the black officers that's on the police department. I mean, do we have any black officers on the police department above sergeant or anything like that? Do we have anybody up there getting all this money and going out to communities, looking out for the community? No, we don't. So, people y'all sit around with all these false promises and faith and hopes and all this stuff feeding us to us while we meekly take all this stuff. And it's not working no more. Instead people talking about resigning, no, they need to be fired. Because when you resign, you get to leave with your money, your little benefit packs and all that stuff, they need to be fired. Forget resigning. So, if y'all going to be real and be transparent and whatever you want to call it, do that. Because many of y'all leave Asheville down the path back to the 1600s. We got a police department that has two forces in it. We got officers and we got overseers. The officers look out for the community, the oversees look down, look, hold down the black people in the community. And we got people that sit on the city council that when they question about something that goes on in the black community, they don't have no answer, they don't know what's going on. Why? You're a part of this city, you should know everything that's going on. I'm telling you, I'm just disgusted. It's hard to find words, but I'm just disgusted, because I seen y'all at CPAC the other night. Nobody got up on that stage with the chief, except for, nobody's here. Yeah, nobody wants to face our wrath. Y'all think we don't feel the pain and we're just going to keep quiet about this. How are we supposed to keep quiet? I mean, 1954, NC versus Moseley says, "It's not illegal to flee an illegal arrest." So now this man's attempting to be arrested for jaywalking or trespassing through Smile Stars. I see that every time I come through to the baseball games, and then people walking through Smile Stars clothes, people walking down through their bicycle and all that. Do y'all have any data showing how many people have been prosecuted, charged for jaywalking here in Asheville? What about downtown? You can't even drive through there. The only time jaywalking seems to be a crime is if you're black.
That's right.
The only time many things seem to be a crime up here is if you're black.
That's right.
I'm scared that my kids go out. I'm scared to go out myself half the time, because I'm going to be targeted. Don't make no sense. I thank you all that do what you do up here, because I know it's a hard task, especially when you've got so many people pulling against you. But I believe we can get through this if we can just get rid of the rotten apples that's in the barrel, because one rotten apple spoils a whole barrel. I see y'all looking at me, just please pay attention to what I'm saying. We need y'all to work with us.
No, we need them to quit.
We need y'all to work with us, we're going to make a change in Asheville. Because if y'all not working with us, working against us, and just worried about where your check's coming from, what you're going to spend it on and stuff, it's not going to get it. And in my parting, I'm not going to take it the whole time, because I want to hear what everybody said to say. I don't think you should be allowed to resign from shit. You need to be fired, and fired immediately, Mr. Jackson.
The next person I have signed up to speak is Joe Minicozy, then Jay Springer, and then Michael Collins. We're just going to keep, we're just going to keep on keeping on, so if anybody needs to take a break, obviously, go for it.
I would first apologize to Mr. Rush, as a citizen of Asheville, and to say that. And I want to apologize to everyone who has been abused by the failure of government to protect its citizens. It doesn't come easy to come here before you, but I just can't sit at home and watch this. This is an incredible moment for you all. It's an incredible moment to step forward and show leadership and make a change, to have accountability, integrity, which has been sorely missing as this has all unfolded in front of us. Now, I've heard you all say words like embarrassed, shocked, angry, disgusted, this isn't who we are, and being really surprised. I was presenting in Kansas City last week in front of 350 people, and onstage they asked me about this, and they asked me those words. And I said, "I'm not surprised. I'm embarrassed, but I'm not surprised this is going down and unfolding the way that it is." For folks to not know what's going on and to not step forward and be accountable, this has been a circus that's been unfolding in front of all of us. We knew, we needed to know, who knows what went? When did this all happen, and who knew what was going on? You know, Gary, you came to us 13 years ago when I was on CAN, and the Coalition of Asheville Neighborhoods Board, and you promised to change. You said that this is a culture problem.
Joe, try to direct your comments to us.
So we have a system that is managed by one individual that you all put at your employ to create a system that's had 13 years at the helm. So there is either a failure or a design failure in that process, that somebody should have known what was going on. You just have to look at that tape to see it. So I need to know who knew and how this has been held accountable to you all. And it'd be great to see some action, some leadership, some integrity in this process. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jay Springer.
Hi, I'm not really going to say anything new that hasn't been said tonight, and want to thank all the speakers for coming out, well, most of them. But I first want to note that this was predictable, like, we knew this was going to happen, and I keep hearing all this shock and all this ah, and all this disappointment, and this was 100% predictable, and it's probably going to happen again. We know that from national statistics, we know that from the folks in the room who are describing their lived experiences. So it just, it kind of feels like we're playing this game where everyone acts surprised, we come out, it's all reactionary, and then nothing really happens. I don't think training can solve this problem. I think what really needs to happen is like a massive divestment from policing. We give over $25 million to the police every year, and a few months ago, we came out asking y'all to not give them more money, and I felt like I was looked at like I was a child. I was talked to like there was something we just weren't getting, and it was so much more complicated than we could ever understand. And all this fear-mongering around, what if there aren't cops? What's going to happen? And I'm encouraging us all to take that leap, because I think there's a lot of folks that live in fear right now, and I don't want to be intimidated by what might happen if there were 10 fewer cops or $3 million put into folks getting access to resources they need, also potentially giving a resigning city manager's pension to Mr. Rush. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next person is Michael Collins, and after that, so, Michael Collins is next, and then up after that is Diana Loveland and Matilda Bliss.
Ray Mapp is about there.
I'm sorry?
Ray Mapp is about there.
Somebody give off some song for Ray Mapp for Asheville Black Lives Matter.
Ray Mapp is about seven or eight people down. Okay, go ahead.
When Christopher Hickman beat and brutalized Johnny Rush, he traumatized this entire community. Unfortunately, as we have seen on video footage over and over and over again, this is business as usual for the Asheville Police Department. Yet it is important to note, we wouldn't be here tonight if it weren't for a leaked video. The system doesn't work, the chain of command doesn't work, and none of it deserves our trust. However, since the video was made public, we have seen action. Officer Hickman was brought up on criminal charges, we have heard Chief Hooper offer to resign, and we have seen Todd Williams, the district attorney, drop 27 cases that involve testimony given by Officer Hickman. None of this is good enough. None of it represents justice for Mr. Rush. None of it takes away the trauma. But what it does show is that when we have community oversight of police, when the public has access to body cam footage, we get results, we get action, we get accountability. I don't want to hear about what council can't do. We need you to be better. We need you to stand with the people, and we absolutely need the creation of real, meaningful public oversight of our own police force. Anything less is unacceptable. Folks' lives are on the line. It's been said here numerous times before, but budgets are moral documents. Last year, this community mobilized and petitioned and gave public comment to prevent further funding for a police department that brutalizes its most marginalized community. We are not surprised about what happened, because we hear about it from folks on the ground all the time. We come here to uphold and amplify their voices and uphold their humanity. You have got amazing people in this community. Please, as we undergo the 2018 budget process, direct your city manager to craft a budget that reallocates financial resources from the police department and invest it in the people. Fund healthcare, fund housing, fund education, fund public transit. We need millions for the people and not the police.
Diana Loveland's next.
And after Diana Loveland is Matilda Bliss.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've worked with the Asheville Police Department for over 18 years. Over the last 18 years, I've seen a lot of positive change in our department. The chief is by far the most productive police chief we have had in my tenure. The members of the Asheville Police Department do not condone the actions of Chris Hickman, and we were just as appalled by the video as you guys were. The department is working hard to build relationships with the community and city council. We have put in place progressive policies supporting de-escalation techniques as well as stringent use of force policy. The officers welcomed these policies. We are shamed by the public statement on one Asheville by council. Some have put forth some public support online, and Madam Mayor, we thank you for meeting with us the other day. We have prejudged officers. We have prejudged the officers as a whole, and we are not a whole with Hickman. We do not condone, or approve, or support his actions. Officers understand that this video has damaged our department. It is important to know that Hickman's actions do not represent us as a whole. Years ago, council members would come on ride-alongs with officers, not just during banker's hours, but all times of the day, night, mornings, afternoons, after 2:00, when most people are home. This doesn't happen anymore. I encourage you to partnership with the department and help build community relationships instead of building the divide. You have good officers in your department. They're here because they want to make a difference and help build up their community. They don't want to tear it down. They want to work with the community, and they want to work with the city to make Asheville a better place to live for everyone. Thank you.
And after Matilda Bliss is Rondell Lance.
Black Asheville is getting stopped on the street for a non-crime. Black Asheville is getting told the depression is all on its head. Black Asheville is getting called bro by a stranger with a badge. Black Asheville is getting told it will get written a ticket or accept handcuffs. Black Asheville is fleeing, fleeing from arrest for a crime it didn't do. Black Asheville built Asheville. Black Asheville is wrestled to the ground and tased repeatedly. Black Asheville is beaten, choked, anything to quell its cries of self-preservation. Black Asheville is put into a car and told to shut up. Asheville will lie about this and how it all happened. Black Asheville is the achievement gap, health disparities, 29% of black families without access to a vehicle, the income gap, and the overwhelmingly awful wealth gap, and unemployment rate that is despicable. I will echo the demands of Asheville Black Lives Matter, and I will stand by them. Reparations be given in the form of checks, and it would be huge for making Asheville as equitable as it claims to be. And $13 million of the $20 million tourism and development budget, that's $1,000 per black resident, big and small, is a healthy start. I'm sure they will take the other $7 million next year gladly.
After Rondell Lance is Bill Roberson, and then Anthony Thomas. Maybe we don't have anyone left in overflow, though. Do we still have, Maggie, do we still have folks in overflow? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to come by and speak to you. Thank you for opening this forum for the community to come together. My name is Rondell Lance, I'm president of the internal order police, and I represent the men and women of the internal order police, and many of those work at the Asheville Police Department. I agree with Diana Loveland that the men and women that work there are good men and women. They do a good job every day. They try hard every day. And I, again, as I have in the newspaper here and on TV here, and I've received calls from all over the country, we condemn what happened in the Chris Hickman video. That was terrible. We hate to watch it, it made us sick to watch it. I want you to know that is definitely is not the people at the APD, at the Asheville Police Department. I've worked with them, I know them. Last year, we had officers that was trying to arrest this subject for failure to register as a sex offender. They caught the subject, he turned around and knocked one of the officers completely out, took the officer's taser, put it to his forehead, tased him repeatedly. Second officer showed up to try to help. This subject hit the second officer, tased him. Once the officer that was knocked out come to, the struggle continued, he bit the other officer. One officer was hospitalized for a week because of kidney failure because of where he tased to the head. Our DA's office let that subject, they dropped the plea, they didn't do a plea for time served, and he walked out. served, and he walked out. I was upset. I went to the media, or they called me, and we received that. Goes on. Already this year, January, February, March ain't over. Already this year, 16 officers have been shot and killed in the line of duty. 16 officers have died already this year in the line of duty. The job that these men and women are really willing to step up and do and put their lives on the line for this community, it don't mean they do make the right decision every time. Sometimes they don't, and they should be held accountable, and they need to be held accountable. But when you've got good men and women that are doing a good job, you need to recognize that, and you need to let them know that you support them. You support those that are doing a good job that they should do every day. I know these men and women. I trained many of them. As I put in this morning at 9:00 to the FOP Lodge, I seen Black Lives Matter painted across the front of the FOP Lodge. My heart sank. I didn't blame Dolores. I didn't blame Black Lives Matter. I said, someone is trying to call, keep this division stirred up in our community. We've got a video. It's a white male. They're still working on the case. But I don't have anger in my heart because it said Black Lives Matter. I talked to Dolores. I talked to Dee. We disagree on probably 98% of stuff, but I talk to them, and they talk to me. But more important, they listen to me, and I listen to them. Thank you. Please be patient with these men and women who are trying to do the right thing. Thank you.
Bill Roberson, then Anthony Thomas, and then Ray Mapp.
Madam Mayor, my topic is homelessness in Asheville, so I'm not sure you're finished with the previous topic.
Do you want to wait?
You can wait, or you can go now?
Well, I'll wait until this topic is finished and go last.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Anthony Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Anthony Thomas. I'm the general manager of Go Staffing, which is a social enterprise solely owned by Green Opportunities. Tonight, I wanted to take my time to speak on behalf of several of the employees that we have been serving over the course of the last six months, who recently lost employment through a contract that we had with the city. They don't have the opportunity to come speak for themselves, so I want to represent them tonight. So if I can briefly read just bios on each one of those individuals, if you allow me. Desiree Gamble. Desiree was a hard-working employee. She had an obligation to the court system and to ensure that she could pay, to pay those obligations. She was working with the civic center. All of this stems around a contract that we had with the U.S. Cellular Center and with the city that was terminated in January abruptly. She was very respectful, often requested by Chris Corl, who is the general manager of the U.S. Cellular Center, and is now seeking employment. We have not been able to place her into another situation, and so she still has those same financial obligations that she needs to pay to the court, and we're seeking to place her. Mr. Marcus Wyatt, who is a resident of Erskine Street Apartments. As a resident of public housing, he was an employee that we were happy to serve by assisting him with obtaining gainful employment. He is the main provider in his household. He was actually scheduled throughout the middle of February, when the call came, that our contract was canceled immediately. We are currently also seeking employment for Mr. Wyatt. Jerome Bailey, another housing resident in Bartlett Arms. As an independent living adult, all of his household income is solely dependent on him. He is a man that is very hard-working, and was available for any hours that were requested of him or available. He was very dependable, respectful, hard-working. Jerome was assigned to the cellular center for the majority of late evening and overnight assignments. Jerome never called out nor showed up late. He actually had just arrived for work when I myself went to do a visit, when they got the abrupt call to not send any of our employees in for that contract. Jonathan Dixon is a younger man that is currently living in a recovery environment. He was willing to work all hours and all shifts. He was very dependable, hard-working in every regard. He also was assigned to the civic center. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not sure, but out of all three of those folks, and I'm not sure if this is a coincidence, the first three are African-American. Jonathan ended up getting pulled by the general manager at the civic center and put on another staffing agency who was able to keep their contract with the civic center.
Can, we've got your contact information here. Do you already have a response from the city regarding the termination of the contract? Do you want some information about it?
Gary and I have had some conversations, but we have not, we were told that we were going to be getting an interim contract. We have not yet received that interim contract, and so we're still waiting.
Okay. I'll check on it. Mr. Ray Mapp? And then Jonathan, wait, Scott, you're next.
I have some time left.
I have, I have some folks that signed up and wanted to cede their time. I don't know if they're still here. Kristen Smith? Three that's not already, okay. Kim, you agreed to cede your time? I've got one. Who else? Yes, and then any, one more? I have Sabra. You agreed? Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. My name is Ray Mapp, and I represent the United Community Development, and also represent the human race as a whole. I just want to give everyone in these chambers a little education on the culture of America. I like to have everybody to look up the third verse of the National Anthem. It celebrates the killing of enslaved people, and is followed up by liberty and justice for all or something crazy, right? But please, everybody in this room who calls themselves American, look up the third verse of the National Anthem, please, because it's not sung at the games, okay? That's first. Second, that picture right up over the mayor is entitled "The White Man's Family Council." And if you read the definition of what the artist was trying to convey, it brags about white people coming to western North Carolina and committing genocide on the Indians and taking their land. That picture is a celebration of genocide over the Indians. So the culture of America, you don't have to be a, and another thing, the Ku Klux Klan is a legal domestic terrorist organization.
That's right.
We know they hang people. We know they kill people. We know they bomb churches, but they're still legal, and they can come to your home and get a permit to do a membership drive or have a parade. So they are a supported government terrorist, domestic terrorist organization. And until we dismantle them, anybody on this panel could be a Ku Klux Klan, anybody on the police force could be a Ku Klux Klan, and we know what their agenda is. Let's not pretend. So let's all learn to be human, define what domestic terrorism is, and end it before it turns on you. So with that, let's be human.
So Jonathan, I have one person who wanted to cede their time to you. Do you need 10 minutes?
Man, I'll take all the time.
Okay. I love that one. So I've got one person whose name I can't read, whose last name might be Brown.
Who might be Brown.
Son.
I could probably do this real quick in three minutes. I know it's been a long couple days for you guys, listening to all this ire. I was at the CPAC meeting the other night as well, all these community members coming out there to vent their frustration. A gentleman a few minutes ago, Zachary with the purple hat, spoke a whole lot. He was just saying, you know, he didn't feel like he was being heard. And another gentleman came up here and said, yeah, I don't think we're being heard. Who was there at that meeting? I mean, I guess, you know, didn't recognize any faces. You were there, you were there, you were there, you were there. And you know what you didn't do? You didn't bother to stand up and say, I'm here. How are you going to stand up for the people if you won't stand up in front of them? Finally, after about two hours of the police chief being hung out to dry so that you could comfortably come and throw your support behind her the next day from your laptop and your coffee, somebody asked where the mayor was, and they pointed you out to them. There she is, standing on the side of the room. And in that moment, you could have taken a right-hand turn and gone up to the stage and presented yourself as the mayor of this town. But you didn't. You walked left. Exit theater left for Esther Mannheimer. You just left. Whoa, whoa, whoa?
I didn't.
Is that your, that's your response? What was I supposed to do?
Jonathan, my response is that I did not leave, and it wasn't our meeting.
It wasn't your meeting. You're right. It was an official meeting, and that was to be handled by Keith Young. You guys didn't have to be there at all. I'm really glad that you came out. Keith Young over there is busy becoming a representative Charlotte now. What's your platform campaign? I'm abandoning Asheville to come represent a bunch of people in Charlotte? What are you doing here? How are you going to serve the people of Asheville when you need to run down and be at a candidate's forum that happens to be during city council time or whatever else that you're supposed to be here for? You're not committed to Asheville. You're committed to Keith Young. That's all you're here for, ma'am. You do a great job posting selfies of you taking care of business, but you know, it's just an act. Are you going to commit to being in Asheville after you made the right choice the other night to leave? I didn't see you get up on stage. You never, everybody's here wondering where you were. This guy over here is just saying, where were you? You were in the room. You were in the room, and you didn't even bother to make your presence known. Neither did you win, neither did you, and neither did you. And all we got left is our official guy? Thank you for hiding behind the technicality of your position. It wasn't an official place for me to be, but it takes more from a leader than that. But thanks for coming out that night. Hope you had a great time. This couch fire is going to get, you know, pretty toasty around here. I hope you do something other than splash some Chardonnay on it to put it out. Have a good night. Thanks for coming out.
Hillary Brown is the next person I have signed up to speak. Becca Goldstein. Oh, no, this person says they wanted to cede their time. Becca Goldstein. Michael Carter.
Equity is about hard decisions. During the campaign process, I was very fortunate enough to volunteer for Shinni's campaign, and I felt so blessed to be able to volunteer for your campaign. And during the course of that process, I was able to sit in a lot of debates. I'm sure you guys have seen me in some of those debates, and I saw you. And equity was a hot topic. It was a topic that was talked about in many, many different ways. But equity is about hard choices. And even though the police chief has made some commitments, and even though the police chief, from a lot of community members have said that, you know, she's doing a better job than other people are doing, I think we need to make the hard decision and the hard choice to move forward because we can be better. And when I called for that resignation and I looked at some of you in the face, and I asked for you to speak during that time, and I connected with you, I expected you to be better. I'm not here to shame you, though. That's not what I'm here for. I'm here to deliver a call to action. A citizens review board for the police doesn't have to be a harbinger of this dark energy that's going to come over the police force. It can be a partner. It can also have an expansive role. It doesn't have to be a board where complaints just come there. It needs to be. Complaints need to be heard there, and citizens need to get heard in that format. But it can also be a tool to use to recruit Asheville residents, and Asheville residents of color, to the police force. Now, I've been getting a lot of flack for calling for the police chief's resignation, and I've spoken with her before that incident. She came to our community engagement socials. She attempted to be invested in the community, and I commend her for that. However, we can do better, and I know we can. And there's no reason why we can say, oh, there's no reason why we can stand here and say, oh, we don't know what's going to happen if she leaves her position. We also don't know what's going to happen if she stays. I think at this point in time, there's a lot of animosity, and there's a lot of negative energy, and I hear that. But at the end of the day, that's not going to go away unless solutions come forth and hard decisions are made in the name of equity. And there are a lot of great policymakers on this committee right now, on this council. There really are some quality, talented policymakers, and you can make some great policy. But if you leave that chief in the position that they're in right now, the community is going to say, look what they did. They didn't do, they didn't do what they said they were going to do. They didn't follow through. They didn't make the real change. Those things didn't really happen. It's a hard choice. It's not an easy choice, and we don't know what's going to happen next, but it's a choice that needs to be made. And when we have these conversations about equity, and we talk about standing up, we need to talk about safety. And safety is the hugest piece of equity. It's an essential, vital part. So I call you to action. Make it happen.
I've only got a couple more people who signed up that didn't indicate on their sheet that they wanted to cede their time, and that's John Matat or Matat?
John H. Matat. I just want to say, God bless, and thank you, Lord, for all my blessings. Bless everyone in the world with your love. But I also wanted to say hello to all of you, because I don't know any of you. That body cam thing that was released to the press, that was intentional. If somebody doesn't like this guy, and there's probably a reason behind that, whatever reason that may be, and I don't really care what it is. My brother was a police chief in a different state. This is Asheville right here. This is Asheville. That's it, right there. It's all they're about. People don't, people don't matter. People that don't have this don't matter. And I'm not holding much right now, and it's okay. I've had three jobs in 29 years, one week without a paycheck. I have nothing except for the love of my family and my kids and grandkids, and I have the love of my brothers and sisters in Asheville. My legal name's John H. Matat. My street name is Gabriel. I watched that video cam a little bit that I got on my tablet, and I watched that guy get hit in the head five times while he was down with all those police officers around. That is so uncalled for. That is a disgrace to the American society. I moved here from New York four years ago, not downstate, upstate, all right? I'm so disgraced. I'm so ashamed of who I am. I can't believe how repressed this North Carolina, I'm not saying North Carolina so much, but Asheville, how everybody is just pushed down. And I'm not blaming any of y'all, okay? Y'all got your jobs, you got your positions. I'm not blaming the police force. We're all good and bad people, any race, any part that we're from. It doesn't matter. I don't hold blame against anyone. That officer was definitely wrong. You know, in New York where I'm from, we get appearance tickets for trespassing. We get appearance tickets for petty larceny. We don't have the police force just throw us in jail, Bumpkin County Jail, maybe beat on us once in a while if we, if we're leaning up against the bars or standing on the cell bars or something stupid like that. And I'm going, I'm going off on a tangent right now. I realize that. But since I've been here, the homeless situation is out of control. There's so much money being spent elsewhere to the hierarchy, demographic, people who have money already. You already have money, you got a business, you want to make more money. All you want to see are the money people. I tried to rent a hotel room here in Asheville. I'm a resident. I cannot rent a hotel room in Asheville. What kind of garbage is that? Dude, it's my money. I worked for it. You know, really? You want to talk about, what do you call it? What's the word I'm looking for? Somebody help me. Prejudice, whatever. Prejudice because I live in this city. Prejudice because I live in this city or this county, whatever. Yeah, it's county, actually. So I can't rent a motel room here. Thanks. God bless. Love you.
Ben, um, Ben Cohen or Kohan?
So I come here as a private citizen. What I say only represents my own personal opinions. I also come here as a personal, private, and practicing Jew. In the Talmud, it states that if you have an opinion that you disagree with someone on and you don't think that they're willing to hear it, then you should confront them about it in private. But if you believe that they're open and willing to hear it, then you are required to confront them about it in public. And so I'm standing up here because I have hope and I have faith that you all will hear what is being said today, not by me, but by the people of color who are affected most by this issue. I've heard it said many times already today that there's been a lot of powerful things that have been said in this meeting, but they're only as effective as what you all decide to do with it. And I just completely blanked on what I was going to say because I was nervous. But it's only as effective as what you all decide to do with it. As the grandchild of a Holocaust survivor, I understand what it's like to live with historic trauma, but I cannot deem to understand what it's like to live in a nation that continues to perpetuate that trauma every day. It's an injustice. What I say next is not with intention to call out, but with intention to appeal. I have attended shul with the mayor. I have been to the mayor's sons' bar mitzvah. My wife has taught the mayor's children, though she does not know that I'm speaking today. So what I say doesn't represent her opinions. But in Judaism, there are values of justice and equity. And in our history, we have a history of persecution and a history of injustice. And right now in America, we have the privilege of being able to live in a reduction of that persecution, and we've received privileges for being white in this nation, or a lot of us who are white have. I think we have an obligation to hear those who don't receive the privileges that we receive. And I think we have an obligation, no matter our faith, no matter who we are, no matter our color or whatever, to hear the cries of people who are not getting their needs met and to address them. So I appeal to you all today to please, don't just listen, but act. As Rabbi Abraham Joshua Heschel said, there is time for prayer and then there is time to pray with your feet. So please pray with your feet and do something.
The rest of the folks that I have signed up to speak have ceded their, they indicated they wanted to cede their time. Is there anyone else before, before we go to Mr. Robertson? I know you want to speak on homelessness. Yes.
Can I quit?
Yeah, but please, you got it because you got to come to the microphone. So everyone can watch it. Again, just please state your name now we're not on these sheets, so if you're interested.
Sure. My name's Luke Farnbach. I was just saving this for the end. I was hoping it would get brought up. There's a lot of talk about people resigning, people being fired. I support most of what was said. The one person who wasn't mentioned that I heard was Larry Holt. His behavior at the CPAC meeting was super inappropriate. I mean, what happened with Carol, the grabbing of the mic, and the way that he talked to the community, I don't think is what we're looking for in someone in that role. So I'm really eager to hear what you all plan on doing in terms of removing him from that position. I haven't heard that he's resigned yet, but I was sort of expecting that to happen immediately. So I'm looking forward to hearing what you all are doing about that.
I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but yeah, I just, sorry, my name's Darlena Zarmy. And I believe the microphone was grabbed when she was affirming the motion about the citizen review board, right? Absolutely unacceptable. Beyond that, this, this entire thing, a breach of the public trust that is beyond, There was another person that was there at the CPAC meeting, and that was Ian Mannes. Drove up again from Durham. That is unbelievable to me, that the quotes that he said after this being, you know, an emergency, coming up again to state that the, that the rate of stops doubled. We need preventative policy. Yes, a citizen review board, important. Yes, a biased hotline because people are intimidated to report their, their experiences at the police, important. But we need to deprioritize regulatory stops and we need written consent searches. It's been done across North Carolina. I don't know what Dee and Ian have to do to make this happen, but we need this to happen. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you, Mr. Mannes. Please take action. This is life and death. That video could have gone one step further real quick, and this would have been a different situation. But it's this situation, and we need action from y'all. And if you can't take that action, you can direct people to do it.
Anybody else before we go to Mr. Robertson? Okay, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. My name's Bill Robinson, and I come here, as I have the last several city council meetings, to talk about the homeless in Asheville. I come here with no clear sense of anger, although we've heard a lot of that tonight. I come here with more of a sense of empathy and compassion and a need for some simple human dignity in this town. I always try to come here to offer some solutions, some ideas, as I came here a few weeks ago and showed the sleeping bag coat that I and my partners have been trying to distribute in Asheville. And I had originally intended to come here with another idea about how to alleviate some of the extreme suffering of the homeless in Asheville. But something has happened over the last two weeks which bears some discussion, I think, and I just want to bring this out and put it on the table. About two weeks ago, the rescue mission in Asheville decided to stop serving breakfast. And I know from my friends on the street and my fellow homeless people that that meal is very important to them. Doesn't sound like much. We can all get breakfast elsewhere. I mean, most of us have access to breakfast elsewhere. But that rescue mission meal was really important to the people who have very little in Asheville. And so that was two weeks ago, and I don't know why they, they got rid of, why they dispensed with this meal, but there was no discussion, there was very little pushback from any official, any official sources, there was no articles in the Citizen Times, although I think there should have been. And then the very next week, last week, the rescue mission decided that it was too dangerous there when they called code purple and when they brought people in from the streets when it was too cold. And they have now decided that they're not going to be bringing men in when it's code purple. And this is just extraordinary. I mean, I'm outraged. These people were offered a lifesaving service by the rescue mission, and now because they say it's too dangerous to incorporate these people in and let them in from the cold, they've all of a sudden decided they're not going to do it anymore. Very little discussion, again, there was a Citizen Times article. I'd like to know exactly what's going on over there. It's a 501(c)(3) charity. They don't have to pay taxes. I'd like to get a little more transparency about what the thinking is for dispensing with these really important human services. So I put this out there for consideration. I've sent an email to all of the people of the city council yesterday. I'm, I'd love to meet with you either collectively or individually. And I'd also like to take you on a little tour of Asheville's homeless community because these are real people with real problems who really need our help.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've reached the conclusion. We do have a bunch of matters we have to do in closed session. I know, Shanika, you've got the motion.
I'm going to read the closed session, but first of all, I would like to thank everybody for coming out and remaining the duration of this time. I know it's very exhausting, but one thing I would like to say before we go into closed session is that hope deferred makes the heart sick. And a lot of people watched the video and some of them were disgusted, but we can silence disgust. But when you're sick, you can't get rid of that feeling very easily. So things have been discussed with some, by some council members that may have, may be an offense to some of our law enforcement officers. It doesn't mean that we do not want to work with law enforcement, because we have to work with law enforcement in order for us to enact transformative policing in this city. But right now in this space, we will not run, I will not run to the bedside of my officers because we will not switch the focus from Mr. Johnny Rush or the communities that are most affected by this traumatic event. So the entire time, the entire time while I'm sitting here, hearing a lot of stories and a lot of call to actions from community members, there was an officer in the back, actually a lieutenant that I grew up with, actually. I grew up, I saw him when he first came to Asheville and joined the police force, and his love for people is what I have my memory of officers. But right now, me assigning my attention to anybody else would be another blunt force trauma to the head of Mr. Rush. Right now, we have a focus here, and the focus right now is to make sure this collective council actually supports a community who has lost trust during this situation. So I'll be committed to build trust with officers and help, help, think of some strategies that can help. But right now in this space, my focus will be on the community that needs the most care in this situation. I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of General Statutes. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318-10A3. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318-11A1. To consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney, client privilege between city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to a lawsuit involving the following parties: Bach versus City of Asheville. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318-11A3. To consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, or conditions of appointment of an individual police public officer, officer, or employee, the statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318-11A6. And to prevent the disclosure of information that is confidential pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168 through 168, the Personnel Privacy Act, the statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318-11A1.